Welcome, everybody, to the April 28th meeting of the Planning Commission. Platte County Planning Com- Flag salute.
Let me just do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have roll call now.
Mr. Akkuri is absent. Mr. Seveson? Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss? Mr. Johnson is absent. Mr. Nader?
Here.
Mr. Ricucci?
Here. We have a quorum, so that's good. The good guys are here. Is that what you said? The other three aren't going to like that response when I tell them. Report from the planning director. Report from the planning director, EJ.
Good morning, Chairman. I'm under the commission media authority with planning services division. I just really wanted to talk about the upcoming planning commission. Hearing schedule, May 12th, which is the next meeting, we will be going up to Tahoe. We'll be at the resort at Squaw Creek. We have four items on that agenda, the Tahoe Expedition Academy, the Chalet Road Townhomes. That's the eighteen halfplex project in Alpine Meadows. There's an appeal of a grading permit and then also a, there's a determination of general plan consistency on a road abandonment on Bay Street. So, that is confirmed. The second meeting in May, May 26th, we had tentatively scheduled the diligent squaw valley specific plan project. As you know, those big projects take, it takes an army to get those together and ready for the commission. Right now, we're down to the development agreement and trying to iron out the last few details. I do not have confirmation if we're going to have all that done by the 26th. We're shooting for that, so I hope to update you either next meeting or prior to that as to whether we'll go to Tahoe on May 26th. June 9th, which was our third in a row Tahoe meeting, that's where we have the Marthis Valley West Project proposed. That is on schedule right now, and I don't see that one being changed at this time. June 9th. And Kathy, that's where we're at, Grand LeBachton, Grand LeBachton, I have both of those.
You talked about special media at one point. Are you still thinking about that?
It all depends on what happens May 26th. And so for the, I think it's really up in the air right now. I think, I think once we make a determination on whether Squaw goes on the 26th, then we can line out the rest of the schedule because, you know, the other thing we have going on, we also have projects down the hill and, you know, in West Placer. So, we need to do a, you know, another meeting here in Auburn to address those projects.
Would that maybe be in May or is that going to be in June?
So, so, I don't, yeah, I don't think we'd have more than the two meetings in May. So, I think you're looking at the May 12th, the May 26th. I don't see anything beyond that. If there's any special meeting, we'd probably see that possibly in June. And I'll do my best to keep you informed as soon as I get, you know, information as well. Board of Supervisors hearing, the, the last time they met was up in Tahoe on the 19th, and they were giving an update on the Tahoe area projects just as a whole and then also the Tahoe Basin Area Plan update, which we're hoping to get the draft EIR, EIS, and draft area plan released the week of June 20th. So, that's all I have. I wanted Karen, real quick, just to address the, the fact that we do have a quorum, even though we have four commissioners and, and what that means. Unless there's any other questions, I'll turn it over to her.
Just one quick question, EJ, are, that marijuana ordinance that the county Board of Supervisors is working on, are we, are we going to have a report on that or?
That, that is on my list, and we're waiting at, for the CEO to decide when they want to bring that to the commission. I'm not sure of the timing. I don't know if Karen knows any more than I do.
I, I haven't heard any more about it either.
You know, that's fine. That's fine if you don't.
I know, I know it hasn't gone away. It's, it's, the county continues to work on it, so it would definitely be before the commission. We just have to figure out when that's going to be.
Hey, any questions for EJ? If not, Karen?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. As EJ mentioned, you do have a quorum. However, you've only got a four-member commission. If there is a vote that is two-two, a tie, it constitutes a denial of the request. If it is a two-two tie on anything that is recommendation to the board, it's also a denial of the recommendation. If you come to the point where we think we have a two-two tie, there's always the option of the applicant requesting that this be continued to another meeting of the commission when there's more members present. So, we'll take it as it, as each item comes along as to whether that's going to occur or not, and we'll see how it goes.
So, there's nothing on our agenda that requires for today, a vote?
No, there is not. Luckily, we don't. That would be a general plan rec amendment, recommendation, and luckily we don't have any of those.
Okay, that's a good question, though. Very good question. Okay, no more comments from commissioners. The next item is, is public comment. This is a time during every meeting that the public can comment on any item not on today's agenda. Is there any item that they would wish to comment on? We can't make a decision on it, but we'll take testimony and comments. Okay, seen none, we'll move on. To the consent calendar, I see there's no, no consent items today, so I guess that dispense with that real quick. Item, the ten, 1005 item is the extension of vested tentative subdivision map. And Roy, we'll take that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was continued from the April 14th meeting, and it was re-noticed, including in Sacramento Bee newspaper. At that point in April 14th, we, I, I gave a short presentation, we heard from the applicant, and we took some testimony. And today, we have attached the mitigated negative declaration, which wasn't included with the April 14th package for the planning commissioners. And we also did a revision to the discussion of issues, to be accurate in what was reflected and what needed to be done for the work. And the Eden Rock Two subdivision is just south of Eden Rock and east of the Los Lagos subdivision. It's six residential, family residential lots and then one open space lot. And we're recommending the one-year extension of time request, and we have some modifications to conditions of approval. The new expiration date would be February 10th of 2017, which is one year from the expiry, so it's a little more than nine months from today's date. And we're recommending approval subject to the findings included in the staff report.
Okay. Any questions of Roy at this time? If not, thank you. I'll open it up to the public. Does the applicant wish to comment this time on the one-year? It'll be about a nine-month extension. Anyone, anyone else care to comment on this item? If not, we'll close the public comment and turn it back to the commission members here? Remotion or?
Mr. Chairman, barring any comments from the other commissioners, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission approve a one-year extension of time for the Eden Rock Two subdivision and modify the conditions of approval as recommended by staff, subject to the findings, the sequel findings attached to the report.
Okay, thank you. And moved, moved in two seconds. We'll give this one to Larry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Akkuri is absent. Mr. Seveson? Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson's absent. Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the next item, it's Greyhawk Three rezone vested tentative subdivision map. And who's handling it? Okay, here we go.
I don't know what that was. Is that important?
I don't know. Maybe you broke something again.
No, it wasn't. Good morning, George Rososco, Platte County Planning Supervising Planner. I am sitting in for Chris Schmidt, who is unable to be here today, who is the project planner on the project. So, I will endeavor to do my best as we go through this project. So, the project location is on the corner of Sierra College Boulevard and Eureka Road. The applicant for the project is Patterson Properties, also the owner of the project. So, you can see it in the context to put it, if you go essentially up Sierra College, you're on the corner by this, by the large shopping development. Then on the opposite side, across Eureka Street, there's another sort of strip commercial shopping center and a large subdivision in the city of Roseville called Hillsborough. I'm not sure it's called Hillsborough. I'll take that back. There's a Hillsborough Drive. I'm not sure it's actually called Hillsborough, Hillsborough. This is the zoning on the property. On the western side, commercial plan development with design corridor. And then on the east side, it's presently zoned RSB 40, planned development, two units per acre. They're proposing a rezoning, which we'll get to as we move through the presentation. Again, this is just to give you a blow-up of the project site. On the west side is 8.9 acres gross, 7.01 net. East side, 11.65 acres gross, 10.62 acres net. Again, that's the zoning. The entitlements that they're requesting, on the western side, they're requesting a rezoning from RSB 40 PD 2 to RSB 18 PD 2.8. I just wanted to note that the rezoning does not require a general plan amendment. The rezoning would be consistent with the exist, I'm excusing, existing Granite Bay Community Plan. And then on both sides, there will be vesting tentative subdivision map. On the eastern parcel, there'll be, on the 11.65 acres, there'll be 28 single-family residential units, and it will be a planned residential development, proposed to be a planned residential development. On the western parcel, there will be 44 halfplex units, which is not a planned, a planned development, but needs a use permit as well. So, both sides will have a conditional use permit and one vesting subdivision map. This is the actual proposed project. You can see on the western side, that's the halfplexes. On the eastern side, you can see the single-family residential units that are proposed, and the open space sort of in the north central area is the largest part up by Strap Ravine. The entryway, the main entryway, which is proposed to be gated, will be on Eureka Road. More about that later. And then there'll be an EVA out to Sierra College, sort of in the northwestern corner, corner. Uh-oh. Oh. Don't know what happened there. These are the proposed housing types. You can see the difference between a duplex and a halfplex. If you don't know, a halfplex actually has a common property line right down the middle of the common wall, so it's on two separate pieces of property and is separately saleable. A duplex is usually just a two-unit building on a single piece of property and is not usually separately saleable unless it's condoed, in the condominium. And then that is approximate what the single-family dwellings will look like. This is just another diagram to give you a sense of where the open space is. It will be 7.3 acres of open space or 40% of the project site. The tree impacts, the trees mostly are right in the center of the project. You can see the entryway where the larger orange dot is. There's a significant amount of tree impact that will take place as part of this project, and it will be mitigated at a, they'll purchase credits at two to one for the loss of the tree, and they'll pay $100 an inch for trees over 24 inches. Give you a sense of the parks and trail. There will be a trail along the frontage that goes along Eureka Road. Then there will be another trail that comes up from, I believe it's existing other Greyhawk, which I believe is Greyhawk Two, will come up through the northeastern corner, loop down, connect with the other trail, and then come down along Eureka Road. So, there'll be some connectivity to the existing trail at Greyhawk Two. Eureka Road entry. Normally, in the Granite Bay Community Plan, Eureka Road is not listed as one of the areas that should have a gated entry. But when staff looked at this, they thought it was better for the entryway for this project to come off Eureka Road instead of Sierra College, where they could have had a gated entry. And because it was so close to Sierra College, the determination was made that it was also okay for it to be a gated entry there. My understanding of the gated entry is it's supposed to be open during the day, and only the gates will be closed at night. Wow, I have no idea what that is. It's not my PowerPoint. I apologize.
There you go.
Wow. It's Chris Schmidt. He tends to get a little more technically advanced than I do. So, this is a blow-up of the Eureka Road entryway. This is the actual, what it will actually look like, the Greyhawk and the two gates and the pilasters and the sort of wing walls. So, this is the fencing plan. You can see in the yellow, each of the single-family residential areas will have a use area only for them, somewhat like a backyard. And then the halfplexes will have fences to create sort of a backyard situation for them as well. And they'll be, just so you can see on this, that's the area of trees that will be left alone that will go up into the Strap Ravine open area. Just more about fencing. If you're interested in the fencing plan, that's the fencing that's proposed to go around the subdivision. Okay, along Sierra College Boulevard, there's a significant amount of noise that will be coming off. There'll be a combination of a berm and a sound wall that will go down and wrap around onto Eureka to reduce the noise to a less than significant level for the houses. They'll also have to have some other mitigations with regard to types of windows and that sort of thing. Parking. When you look through your staff reports, there's pretty in-depth discussion about parking. One of the things that came up was there's a reciprocal parking area as part of this project that will be available to the western part of the project, and that's here. Those 14 spaces, when you come into the entryway, there'll be a reciprocal parking agreement for that side. It just tells you the 102 spaces will be provided on the eastern side, 135 spaces on the western side.
Wait, go back to that slide, could you please, George? Now, the yellow there, it's kind of hard for me to read the legend on it, but on the, on the yellow there, the orange, that's no on-street parking?
No, the yellow is no on-street parking. I'm glad you brought that up.
And the light green is on-street parking?
Light green would allow on-street parking.
On one side of the street?
Yes.
And the other one does not have any on-street parking, and those are residential units, right?
Could you say that again? I couldn't hear you.
There's single, there's single residential units on the right there, so there's no on-street park in front of your house, basically.
No, there's not.
Just wanted to be clear on that.
Talks about aesthetics. The highly visible residence along Sierra College Boulevard will have enhanced facades to create a better-looking project. Also, there's requirements to keep the height down. The eastern single-family residences will be limited to 30 feet, where 36 would normally be permissible under our zoning ordinance. The western half will be allowed, let me think, 36, where normally 50 would be permissible. That just, I guess I should have flipped to this slide before I told you, it's just showing the heights. So, staff's recommendation is adopt the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring project, prepare for the project, approve the rezone, approve the vesting tentative subdivision map, approve the conditional use permit. That would be our recommendation about the recommendation you should make to the board. I should tell you, while I'm on the recommendation, and I want to read it to you, since I don't want to get it wrong. The Granite Bay MAC voted, excuse me, voted six no, six zip against approval. The Granite Bay, and this is just a synopsis, the actual action is attached in your packet. The Granite Bay MAC considered the project at its April 6, 2016 meeting. After presentations by county staff and the applicant, comments from the public, and deliberations by the MAC, voted six zero to recommend denial. That denial was related to issues discussed at the MAC meeting, including residential density, woodland impacts, residential unit size and design, traffic and site access, including the lack of sidewalks, the adequacy of the traffic study completed for the project, and compliance with the community plan's planned residential development objectives. And attachment J, the actual letter from the MAC, is attached, which will give more detail than what I did. I just gave you a summary. So, with that, I think I don't have anything else right now. I'm sure there'll be lots of questions as we move along.
I just have one question. We received an email from Civil Engineers McKay and Somp.
Yeah.
And they're, they're talking about flooding into the Hillsborough Drive area on Eureka Road. Is that, is there additional information on that or?
Yeah. Phil, do you want to answer that? Do you want to take it?
No, why don't you go ahead and take it. We, Phil and I have talked about it, and, go ahead. Yeah. I think.
You think?
Let me see.
That, that's good. That's good.
This one?
Sure. So, the project has constructed, see if I can get this laser to work, a storm drain along the road out here that picks up runoff from off-site, the off-site development here. So, we've spoken with the applicant's engineer, and if there's any problems with this culvert inlet right here, any blockage or anything, that stormwater overland release will, will kind of flow down along the landscape lot there and maybe along the shoulder of Eureka towards the project entrance. It'll then flow through here into this detention basin here. If it still needs to continue, it'll flow down the roadway to Lot C up here and then into the Sierra College Boulevard facility. And we haven't got into the final design of that yet. That usually happens during the improvement plan process. But we have looked at that, at, you know, this scale for environmental review to know that that probably will work.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of George at this time? Okay, thank you, George. Now, we'll open it up for the applicant or applicant's representative, Mr. Laduka. And we won't, we won't apply the three-minute rule to the applicant.
Yep, Mr. Chairman.
After that, we will.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Marcus Laduka, 3200 Douglas Boulevard in Roseville. As you just mentioned, in lieu of having our property owner, our planner, our engineer, and our traffic consultant all get up and give presentations, I'll just be taking their time with the commission's permission and just having one person speaking, and our team will be here to answer any questions you might have or members of the public might have. Just thought it might be easier as opposed to the train of people getting up, talking about different pieces of the project. On behalf of the property owner and applicant, I'm very pleased to be before you today with the recommendation for approval from your staff for a project that has no significant environmental effects. The Greyhawk Three project has been proposed, as you just heard and saw in the staff report, as, with two distinct housing types in the project in an integrated and connected neighborhood. As the staff report notes in great detail, the eastern parcel of the property is zoned for single-family residential uses with a PD zoning, already designated for residential uses in the community plan. We propose 28 single-family detached, what are called cluster homes there, and that density is at 2.4 units to the acre with an adjustment to the zoning density to match exactly the zoning density on Greyhawk Two immediately to our east. That was, project was previously approved by this commission and is under construction right now and selling homes. I would also note that at 2.4 units to the acre, our density is a third less than the Hillsborough subdivision to our south, which is in the city of Roseville and developed at 3.2 units to the acre. The western parcel of the project has commercial zoning, as you've heard. We're proposing 44 halfplex units there, and the density is just under five units per acre on that. So, for halfplex, typically those type of units, you see densities usually far higher, but we're at just under five units per acre. Again, as George mentioned, those units are permitted with a use permit in the zone. So, again, no rezone is needed or plan amendment is needed for that portion of the project. In terms of home sizes, what the building envelopes can accommodate, the single-family cluster homes on the eastern parcel would have homes in the 2,600 to 3,400 square foot range, and the halfplex units would, could accommodate homes in the 2,100 to 2,650 square foot range. Both components of the project, again, are consistent with the land use designation of the community plans, so no community plan amendment is needed. We also are proposing, as the slide that George showed, two trails, one just sort of Strap Ravine, just south of Strap Ravine, extending from Greyhawk Two, and the other along Eureka Road and Sierra College Boulevard, again, consistent with the community plan. And looking at the overall site, again, nearly 40% of the site is, is an open space. In terms of parking, the one indication, and also addressed the chairman's questions, again, the two housing types have two different parking arrangements. In the 28-unit cluster home, you have three-car garages, driveways, therefore, to accommodate those cars. And you have, in three off-street parking bays, you have the additional 28 guest parking spaces. Again, no parking on the street there, but you have guest parking in off-street bays, which you're seeing more and more of. And the idea there was to reduce the street width for a couple of reasons. One, it matches exactly Greyhawk Two, which you approved, and also gets us to less impervious surface, which helps us deal with water quality impacts and water quality regulations, which I think is another item on your agenda later on in the agenda. But you have to look at various, various ways of doing that and having narrower street widths in private streets, you're able to do that. On the western parcel, again, you have the street parking on the Loop Road. You have two-car garages as well as driveways on each, and also three parking bays accommodating 30 spaces. So, staff felt that we provide adequate parking for, for the project in both portions. The staff report and George's presentation today did a very thorough job of describing the project, going over the details. So, we're not going to go any further into the project itself. We're just going to get down to the issues that were raised, that you'll hear raised today or likely hear raised today. First, there have been a lot of comments on traffic. Property owner and applicant retained Ken Anderson, a highly respected and experienced traffic engineer with a lot of experience in Placer County, who is also the county's traffic engineer on the cumulative traffic analysis for Granite Bay to perform the traffic study for the project. The staff report has done a very good job summarizing the highlights, so you don't have to go through the 80-page traffic study in terms of the analysis and Ken's analysis and also the analysis for all the roadways and intersections that would be affected. It's important to note, and we, I'd like to emphasize this, that if you look at just the western parcel, our halfplex units will generate 30% fewer daily trips, 83% fewer morning rush hour trips, and 79% fewer afternoon, evening rush hour trips than if this project were developed with commercial uses. So, in terms of traffic reduction, having 44 half, halfplex units on that will generate far less traffic. At this month's Granite Bay MAC meeting, there was a dispute from one of the residents about the traffic study, and on the grounds that for the intersections that are east of Sierra College Boulevard, traffic counts were done on a collaboration day for Granite Bay High School. And so, therefore, according to the comment, misrepresented and understated the traffic on a typical day of, at, at the high school and what would be typical for traffic on the streets. So, last week, on a typical non-collaboration day, we sent Mr. Anderson out to perform new counts and look at the analysis and the impact. And what he found was, on a quote-unquote "typical" day, we've experienced 10 more vehicles during that peak period, but actually, the level of service at the Eureka Road-Greyhawk Drive intersection improved from F to D. And that's just because there were fewer left-hand turns coming out of Greyhawk Drive heading east on, on Eureka Road. So, you actually saw an improvement there. Mr. Anderson's analysis is included in your table. Mr. Anderson's analysis is included in your staff report as attachment H, but this issue of the collaboration day counts versus non-collaboration day counts is a phantom. It just doesn't exist. Another issue that was raised at the first Mack meeting was whether the product type that's being offered here is even accepted in the marketplace. We can tell you from talking to the builder in Greyhawk II, out of the 21 units there, they've already sold 14, in what would have to be described as a, still a somewhat soft market, and, you know, that'll probably be sold out this summer. As for our half-plex units, what we are proposing is similar to the villas in Tree Lake Village, where there are rarely available units. The units that do come available for sale or otherwise become available are snapped up very quickly, and what we're finding is they're particularly occupied by empty nesters looking to downsize, as well as occupied by single older adults, through whatever family circumstances, are looking to move into a smaller, still a good-sized unit, but again, not wanting a big yard to take care of and that kind of thing. We would note that the villas were developed at eight units per acre, which again, our half-plex units are just under five units per acre. Another issue that you hear about is that there are no home designs proposed here, and so the project should be denied until home designs are shown to the commission. First, all the units in Greyhawk III will be subject to a later design review process, not just the half-plex units on the western parcel, but all the units. Hence, that's, you know, you have a design corridor restriction on that parcel alone, but it's going to be applied to the entire subdivision will have design review. The homes in the project will have to comply with the design guidelines in the Granite Bay Community Plan, and also there have been special design conditions applied to the project for those homes, as the one slide indicated that George had up there, to a number of units that are visible from external streets. So, the aesthetic impacts of the project in terms of what people can see external on the edges of the property will all be subject to those, those conditions, which are described at pages 19 and 20 of the staff report. I would have to add that in the 27 years I've been representing projects in Granite Bay, on the dozen residential projects that I brought forward to this commission and to the board, there have never been home designs that accompanied the project at a tentative map stage, not a single time. And all those projects were approved, nearly all are built out, but there were no home designs that came forward at that time. That's why we have that design review process later on that's conducted by the county. Though, again, my client, the project proponent, is not a home builder. What we are seeing in the marketplace for the type and size of units that you might see in the half-plex part of the project, we're seeing kinds of projects that are being built in places like El Dorado Hills. We have some examples of the kind of half-plex units that could be constructed on that size of lot with that size of building envelopes, just to give you an idea of what you could see on that portion of the project as it comes forward. It's very different from when people used to hear of duplex or half-plexes 30 and 40 years ago.
Are these actual pictures here, photos?
These are actual pictures of a project in El Dorado Hills.
Okay.
That, again, similar in size to the type of homes that we are proposing here. We also heard comments at the Mack meeting that the proposed gate would create traffic issues because cars would be backed up, waiting to get into the entrance on Eureka Road, turning left into the project. However, as George mentioned, just as we'll have a pedestrian gate that'll be open from dawn to dusk, as required by the community plan, our vehicle gate will also be open from dawn to dusk to mirror the pedestrian gate, so there won't be cars backing up, waiting for a gate to access that. They'll be able to go in and leave freely. Would note that across the street in Hillsborough, all the gates there are closed throughout the day, so it's not the same situation. Next, I think you'll hear comments that the project should have a second access point for ingress and egress along Sierra College Boulevard. That narrow side of the project is just downstream from a traffic signal where cars are starting their downhill descent. After cresting the hill on Sierra College Boulevard, they start to go downhill through the traffic signal, and you already are going to have cars merging on westbound Eureka onto Sierra College Boulevard. So, you are going to have some vehicles already entering that flow of traffic for cars heading downhill from a signal. In talking with staff, the idea was to not have as, more breaks in Sierra College Boulevard, particularly where it could create conflicts. As you look at the turn taper there for the right-hand turn along there, you're going to have, you would have cars, if you had an access point there, other than the EVA that we're proposing, you would have cars turning right, cars speeding downhill, and cars trying to get off the main line at the exact same point. So, the idea was to avoid those type of conflicts, and really was the issue was, looking at the traffic analysis, there are no significant impacts created by our access point on Eureka Road. So, the idea was, we didn't have to correct a problem that was being created. Finally, there were comments made that despite the sharp decrease in traffic from the half-plex units versus a commercial project, both for peak hour trips and daily trips, that the proposed project should, folks prefer the commercial project there as opposed to the residential project that we're proposing. Mr. Patterson is a longtime, very successful commercial shopping center builder, owner, and manager. He has lived in Granite Bay for many, many years. His office is close by, and he purchased this property years ago for the distinct purpose of being able to build a commercial center on that parcel. That's what he does for a living. He's done it for decades. He went so far as to advance, fund, and construct the Eureka Road widening improvements that are called for in the Granite Bay Community Plan. He did that to the tune of $1.5 million. He, it was, again, an attempt to try to say, if you're completed drainage and frontage improvements are all done, can that help commercial tenants come in because they're not having to wait for those improvements to be constructed, or in some way having to pay for those as coming forward when they come to develop? What he found is that that didn't help. There is simply no commercial tenant interest. You have a shopping center immediately to the south in the pavilions, which has been open and operating for a decade. It still has very high vacancy rates. At the CVS Shopping Center, just one signal away, at Roseville Parkway and Sierra College Boulevard, there are continued vacancies in that center. So, again, as we found in that run-up between 1997 and 2007, when you had an unprecedented boom of commercial and residential development in the Central Valley, cities and counties were designating lots of land use sites for commercial. They were looking at, you know, trying to pull in sales tax dollars, and what they're finding through that time with the changing retail market, is that you have a lot of empty commercial sites that will never develop as commercial. This one simply, it's been vacant for 20, at least, it's been zoned for 20, at least 27 years, and designated in the community plan for commercial, and yet during that economic boom, still saw no commercial development at this, at this corner. The challenge, therefore, for the property owner was, what do I bring forward? And he wanted to bring something forward that did not involve an amendment to the community plan, and at the same time, was something that would have reduced impacts, particularly in the key issue, which is traffic. And so, he came forward with this proposal that is not super densified. Again, that parcel, under the zoning code with the use permit, could accommodate up to 88 units. The idea was to provide good-sized units on that parcel, and when you looked at the open space and other things that we had to deal with, you ended up with a much lower density you would typically see in a half-plex project, but he thought that by bringing that forward, still providing the trails called for in the community plan, having the oak tree preserve, he, again, has an effectuated 404 permit, and even with that, again, has not been able to get any commercial interest in the property. So, we thought that a project such as this, which reduces impacts to the greatest extent possible, especially in the area of traffic, that by doing so, that we could have a project that would be a benefit to this portion of Sierra College Boulevard and Eureka Road. Again, you have a regional transportation facility, basically the Beltway in Sierra College Boulevard and Hazel Avenue adjacent to this, so while we're providing additional density there, it's not of a very high density to be able to move forward, but something we think will be much accepted in the marketplace. There's a lot of folks looking for those type of homes, and we thought that that would be something that would be least impactful for our neighbors around us. With that, we would ask you to join your staff and recommend approval of the project to the Board of Supervisors as presented today, and as conditioned in the 32 pages of conditions from your staff. Our project team is here to answer any questions that the commission might have, Mr. Chairman, and we would also welcome the opportunity after the hearing to be able to respond to any questions that came up during the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Laduka. Any questions of the applicant rep?
I had a question on traffic, because that was the predominant, I'd say, concern that was brought forward in the emails and letters that we received. In the traffic study, did, there's some construction still ongoing there, which has restricted the use there along Eureka.
Right.
And in the traffic study, did it anticipate what benefit that was going to create to have that there?
Yeah, it projects basically on the lanes being, you know, being open. Again, you know, again, it's been through circumstances outside of my client's control. I mean, a three-month delay just from PG&E alone in this, and then thankfully, we had a wet winter, a relatively wet winter. That's not good for constructing things like roads, but it anticipated that you would have the four lanes completed, the frontage improvements would be completed, and the turn lane would be reopened.
So, whatever the conditions are now, once those lanes are open, it's going to be significantly better?
You're going to have all that capacity that's going to be returned, you know, available to the public.
And this type of project on the west side of this, it kind of fits where SECOG is going, where they really are trying to drive the type of housing that's made, just as, you know, high dense, more of a high-density use of property, wouldn't you say? Isn't that kind of where?
Well, actually, and, yes, and actually, I was very involved with the SECOG blueprint process. I think I attended like 14 of their workshops throughout the region, because I represent projects throughout the region. They would actually be looking on a transportation corridor like this for far greater density. I think the idea was to do something moderate here, at under five units to the acre, and get good-sized homes. The idea was not to overdensify this, as sometimes SECOG is want to recommend, but do something of a very good-sized home. A 2,600 or 2,400 square foot home is still a pretty good-sized home. And so, the idea was to propose something along those lines that would more blend in and sort of transition to the roadway as opposed to coming in with something that was super-high density.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Wayne. Any other comments of Mr. Laduka at this time? Okay, seen none. I'll...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll open it up to the public. First, I want, you're going to say something, George?
No.
Oh, yes, okay. First, I want to apologize to the public. I said everyone else after Mr. Laduka would only have three minutes. We will enforce that three-minute rule after... If, I was going to ask now if there's a spokesperson that maybe could summarize or speak for some of the group here that's maybe in opposition to this project, and I will give them, Mr. Laduka spoke for about 12, 15 minutes, so if there's a person that could kind of be a spokesperson, if you will, I'd open that up to that person. That way, it'd be a fair hearing here. So, if there's a person, one person raised their hand, so I guess they're selected, or she's selected. Thank you for coming forward. Yeah, you will have extra time to...
Great, I appreciate that.
That way, and then the other people that have additional comments in addition to this one here. And we'll also have a sign-up sheet someplace there for, we haven't got one out yet, but if you would sign up.
I'll sign up after.
Afterwards. Thank you, ma'am.
Perfect.
Your name for the record.
My name is Shannon Quinn, and I built my home in Hillsborough North in 1999, so I live to the south of this proposed property. I would like to begin by saying that I have three areas that I would like to speak about in relation to traffic rezone and the SEQA process itself.
Shannon, could I ask you just a moment? George, is it possible to get it back to the first one where you show the whole project, where it is, that it fits to the whole community?
We're not timing this first one, not the first one.
There, that one, thank you.
I'll keep an eye on it.
So, in relation to the rezone, I would like to take you back to November of 2012. I think many of you sat on this board at the time, or this commission, and take a look at the Greyhawk II project. One of the major reasons that Greyhawk II received the rezone from 2.0 to 2.8, along with all of its variances of shorter driveways and the minimum roadway widths, were because of the following recommendations from staff, and in addition, it got very little pushback from the community because of these notes. The benefit for the community would be the complete preservation of Strapper Veen and the 100-year floodplain on both sides of the ravine. Staff reports that this rezone, because of the unique design of the proposal, they support this rezone because of the unique design of the proposal and the physical constraints of this site. In addition, the design allows for the southern portion of the site to be preserved into perpetuity. The problem is now, in 2016, this project is no longer a unique, one-off project with greater good to our community, but instead, it's become the new poster child for how to get a high-density rezone pushed through our community. It's a very slippery slope. And now, I ask, what is the benefit of allowing a rezone from 21 to 28 homes on the eastern parcel of this project? The Greyhawk III MND now cites Greyhawk II as the measure for this development. The proposed section is identical to the private roadway in the adjacent Greyhawk II. The zoning matches the zoning of the Greyhawk II project north of the site. You can find these citations throughout the MND on the Greyhawk III. So, again, what is the benefit? Then, back to traffic. I was the one who brought up the questions about the issue with the collaboration day, and I had another issue. Stephanie Holloway, I believe, is present today. She and I had a go-around about the daily traffic calculations that were used. They used daily trip counts that were consistent with condominiums and townhouses for the single-family, or for the duets, sorry. The name keeps changing. Sometimes they're half-plexes, sometimes they're duets, sometimes they're duplexes. But anyway, it was my contention that we should have used a worst-case scenario, and we should have used calculations that were consistent with single-family dwelling. This was on the heels of Mr. Laduka standing up and saying, just like today, that they're not going to look like half-plexes, they're going to really feel like single-family homes. They're not the half-plexes of old. And it was her contention that, where would she stop? Maybe it would be a sporting complex that she should run trip calculations for. Well, interestingly enough, when I was reviewing the SEQA for Greyhawk II, I happened to be going through that, and that was targeted at a 50-plus, 50-and-older community. But knowing that, the MND for that still stated, "The traffic study analysis made use of the higher trip generation forecast associated with conventional, single-family housing in order to provide a worst-case assessment of potential impacts." So, I feel like the county has set precedence here, and you sometimes use it when you want to use it, when it fits the narrative, and then at other times, when we're requesting it, and it's going to push that threshold of certain intersections beyond the 2.5 seconds, then we're not using it. So, I question that. As a whole, I think we get the traffic studies wrong all the time. I think it's the nature of the beast. I'm not just pointing out Placer County. It's a difficult thing to measure. Granite Bay High School is evidence of that. It is a nightmare for people moving in and out of that area anytime during high school hours, during school hours of coming and going. And I guess it kind of comes down to whether you decide to take a position in theory, or you take a position in reality. And when it comes to traffic, and many of the components of this project, you really need to answer that question yourself, what you want to rely on. I think you'll remember, many of you, back in 2012, when you questioned the representative, and I believe it was, I forgot the gentleman's name. Anyway, he stood up here, and you all questioned him on what the parking situations were going to look like in Greyhawk II, and were people going to park on those streets? And he said, "Oh, no, we have, we have super CCNRs. They're like Kevlar. Nobody can get through these CCNRs, and they're not going to park on those streets." And he assured you of that. Well, interestingly enough, and I have pictures, I drove through the development yesterday, and what do you think are out there? Cars on the streets, and I have, you know, there's cars already parking on the street in the development, and they only have to walk two houses to park in these parking stalls. They don't need to walk halfway through a development to park, and we're already 14 spaces short on the western parcel of this project. So, we have to, again, look at theory or reality. And then, my final concerns are in regard to the SEQA process itself, and MND versus an EIR. We currently, and have for decades, had a view of the beautiful rolling hills, the creek, and all the riparian habitat, oak scrub, that exist there. We will now be looking at facades that are 36 feet high, along with 10-foot soundwall barriers. This is a significant and unavoidable impact for which an EIR must be prepared and has not been. SEQA requires the impacts be studied under baseline conditions, which are the existing conditions at the time of the most recent SEQA document, when it's prepared. The park at Granite Bay is having to do an EIR, and aesthetics is one of the reasons why. This has been completely glossed over on this project. This has been completely glossed over on this project. Aesthetic impacts have been properly recognized under SEQA in connection with impacts on public and private views. The California Court of Appeals recently issued a ruling that the evaluation of potential impacts on a project of a community character are not required under SEQA unless these impacts are aesthetic in nature. This is a gateway into our community, and continuing and coming in and leveling it and removing ninety percent of the trees is going to be detrimental to those of us who have come to value the aesthetics of this area. I do have pictures of the site, if any of you are not familiar with it and would like to see those. So in closing, I just want to say that in my quest to better understand this process and delve into some very dry reading material, to say the least, I have to say that one thing kept coming back to me, and it was the cautionary tale of the Lorax by Dr. Seuss. So bear with me here. "I meant no harm. I must truly did not, but I had to go bigger. So bigger I got. I biggered my factory. I biggered my roads. I biggered my wagons, and I biggered the loads. And I'm figuring on biggering and biggering and biggering and rezoning and rezoning and rezoning." So gentlemen, unless each of you care a whole awful lot, things aren't going to get better. They're just not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have a sign-up sheet there? There we go. Now, that being, make sure my mic is still on. That being said, we'll probably have three minutes. How many of you would like to speak today? Okay, there's several hands up there. Yeah, we'll have you come up for three minutes. But every speaker, if you could hit, you know, hit another new subject matter, or just say that I agree with the last speaker, then go on to your new subject matter so we can make sure that we concentrate on the real significant issues here. And who would like to be next? Okay, we had about, what, seven or eight hands raised, and here's the first gentleman. Want to come up?
Good morning. My name's Paul Hart. I'm the engineer that sent the email on the drainage concern.
Okay.
I live at four-ten Glendon Court. My lot backs up directly and is across the road from Eureka for the project. I echo everything that Shannon had said. You know, I'm for development, but the right development. And so in this case, you know, I'm in agreement with what was brought forward. The other concern I had, and you touched on it, is that because I'm an engineer, and I've witnessed many flooding events on Eureka at the low spot there, something needs to be done because at the entry where they talked about the overland release and getting into the pond, low spot is a bit lower than that intersection at Hillsborough. So something's going to have to be done in that landscape area. So aesthetically, you know, I don't know. That's going to be a challenge engineering-wise to make all that work in maybe a little bit more of a corridor than what they're looking for in the landscaping. So that's just one of the concern I had, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Could you sign in there, please, if you could? Next speaker, while he's signing in?
My name is Jane Nagri, and I've lived at forty-five-oh-two Olive Ranch Road for forty-one years. So I've been working on every community plan and all the different things that have come through. And this is the first time I've contemplated moving. And it's because when I look at my community now, it's not what our community plan envisioned. Our goal in our community plan was written to protect and preserve the unique rural character of the community, maintain the identity of Granite Bay as a scenic, tranquil, family-oriented, rural residential community compatible with the area's physical and natural restraints. This is quickly being eroded and by our many changes to our plan. When I would come home from work, when I would hit Placer County line, I'd roll down my windows and smell the country. And now I wouldn't even think of doing that. And I think what's happened is a shame for all of us. Greyhawk Three is asking for a rezone, the vesting tentative subdivision map, and a conditional use permit. All these changes will result in seventy-two units being built on the twenty-point-fifty-five-acre site. This is extremely high-density in our rural community and has many negative consequences. On the daily trips on Eureka Road, many people will speak about the traffic. Eureka Road in our plan is designated a country roadway, and one of the definitions of that says that the road widths shall be minimized to preserve the rural character. Well, that guideline's already been crossed out. That section of Eureka Road looks a lot like Douglas Boulevard now, to the dismay of all of us. The project says that it qualifies for gates, and the staff backed that up by saying they would move the gates from Sierra College over to Eureka Road. And Sierra College is already a busy street, and it can, it has a right-of-way that you can get out and be able to turn right. And for Eureka Road, it's a country road, and when there are gates put up there, it's not appropriate. So I would ask that you would look at that gate issue because in our community plan, it says it has to be on a major arterial roadway, and that's not Eureka Road. And as far as the plan development, a plan development is the preservation of natural resources. Creeks are riparian areas, the woodlands, the vistas. This project proposes to cut down the oak trees and dig up that beautiful hillside. It is not a plan development.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I support everything Shannon said.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Next person would like to speak?
Good morning. My name is Larissa Berry, and I live in Folsom Lake Estates. I moved to Granite Bay in two thousand and six, and my statement is more a global, comprehensive, cohesive look at a community plan, which is the way projects should be looked at. I see changes happening in this community on a daily basis, and most of them are negative. Granite Bay is rapidly becoming a cut-through route for Eldorado Hills, Folsom, and Roosevelt. Traffic has become intolerable, speeds are dangerous, noise is growing, and proposed high-density development is exploding at an unprecedented rate with no apparent plan to deal with the fallout. It's alarming to see current zoning being decimated with projects proposed, of which Greyhawk Three is one of them, for a two-hundred to four-hundred-and-fifty percent increase in densities. Excuse me, lot sizes are being decreased as much as one-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty percent. The increased density of the five residential projects in planning right now will add an additional six-hundred-and-twenty-five to seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand vehicle trips per year. And that is above current estimates. The number of memory care facilities currently proposed and being built will generate an additional seven-hundred-and-fifty to eight-hundred emergency response calls, adding to an already stressed service at an approximate cost of five-hundred-thousand per year. Changes of this magnitude are neither reasonable nor respectful of the residents who democratically approved the Granite Bay Community Plan and its zoning in two thousand and twelve. The use of plan development changes and land use changes can and will destroy a lifestyle choice. Families who invested in homes and built lives based on established zoning are suddenly having five to ten properties forced upon them rather than the one or two they expected. These numbers are the tip of the iceberg. Looking at these projects singularly and in a haphazard, piecemeal fashion cannot be properly planned for. Doing piecemeal planning changes to a community plan isn't planning. It is reacting. Piecemeal development leads to higher traffic impacts, less certainty for property owners, and diminishes the value of having a community plan. A very succinct statement. Don't let the builder, let the builder leave with the profits and leave the problems to the residents. Keep Granite Bay a premier community. Do not allow it to become mediocre. Respect current zoning, but most of all, please respect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you sign in, please, if you care to? Who's next, please? Okay, ma'am. Front row, and then the other, next one, Sandra? You could, you can start talking while she's signing, if you want.
You can sign up afterwards.
You can sign up afterwards.
Okay.
My name is Michelle Zellhoffer, and I reside in the Hillsborough gated communities. I have a concern as a parent of two young high school students, one on the verge of wanting his driver's license, about the traffic and how it will pertain to people leaving Hillsborough and wanting to turn left onto Eureka Road heading towards Sierra College. That already, even in its three-way intersection state, is a very precarious turn to make because there's a lot of traffic. There's the children zipping to school, from school, and they're often in a rush, and they're not as concerned with traffic and rules of the road as adults. But it's already a very precarious intersection, and I don't see having this new gated community right opposite of Hillsborough creating the situation to be any better. I'm not clear on how the turn lanes would work, if there's going to be a turn lane for those of us exiting Hillsborough to get across and then be able to get up to the proper speed to then continue on our way. And again, this is a highly-traveled road by young children, and it's a very precarious situation. School days, it is a mess. As the parent of two high school students, I cannot even get near the school to drop them off or pick them up. I drop them on one corner at Eureka, and I pick them up on East Roosevelt Parkway because to try to get to the school is too much. So adding this additional traffic hazard, as I see it, only makes me more nervous to have two young people with driver's licenses and vehicles out on the roadway because I don't trust how it's all going to come together, and I do support Shannon as well.
Okay, thank you. Sandy Harris, I think, had her hand up there, so she was getting up, I should say. She didn't have her hand up, she was getting out of her seat earlier.
I'm really speaking for the Granite Bay Community Association. My name's Sandy Harris. And we sent a letter in on this project. I hope you took time to read it. We don't have any problem with converting the commercial to residential. This was done on a project across from Cabot School. But instead of half-plexes, they put individual, single-family residences, and it's not a bad-looking development. It's probably been there twenty-five years. We're not against developing this parcel, however, the Granite Bay Community Association doesn't feel that the Placer County PD requirements are met. It's not the purpose, quote, "of PDs to confer special privileges to any landowner, provide a means to protect an investment, or compensate a landowner for areas of their property that are unbillable under standard development policies and procedures due to existing features and/or constraints on the property." In their application, they submitted, they proposed cutting ninety percent of the trees on this property and grading seventy-five percent of it. So how does that fit into a PD, which you're supposed to work around some of those things? The plan development designation is the most overused and abused tool that developers use to gain large-density bonuses while glossing over their poorly-designed projects. The PDs are to preserve natural resources, provide varying lot sizes to maintain land use compatibility, and increase opportunities for both active and passive recreational facilities. The Granite Bay Community Association also feels there are numerous other problems with this proposal. Gates, one access point, I think Hillsborough has three for half the number of units. Two homeowners associations are going to be required, and there's going to be a conflict of demographics. You're going to have high-priced homes next to these duplexes that are probably going to end up, a lot of them, as rentals. Traffic, they propose a fifteen percent increase traffic on our rural, two-lane Eureka Road with thirty-five mile speed limit, and it's a straight shot to Auburn-Folsom from this development, so they'll use that, not Douglas. In the staff report on page forty-seven, the mandatory finding of significance in county documents, number two, "Does this project have impacts that are individually limited but cumulatively considerable?" And that means, will it be affected by past projects, the effects of other current projects, and the effects of probable future projects? This box was checked note, but we have approximately sixteen projects now going through our process. Some have just started out, some have been approved. These include ten or twelve medical offices, twenty-six loft office spaces, preschool, event center, two residential projects, and two large memory care facilities, all on Douglas. Why aren't they putting those in this process? He said he couldn't get commercial. Also, we have two large memory care facilities for one-hundred-and-ten and two-hundred-and-twenty patients on Sierra College, just a little bit south of this project, and a proposed forty-five to sixty homes at the east end of Eureka Road next to the fire station and Auburn-Folsom, and a hundred-and-eight homes from a loud density of thirty-seven on Barton Road, and fifty-six homes proposed on a property zone for seventeen on Sierra College, all in the area of this project. All of these have requested rezoning, general plan amendments, and changes to our newly adopted plan, which was put together and supported by community members. The commission should consider the big picture. Don't destroy the fabric of the Granite Bay Community Plan with changes not supported by our local community. The Granite Bay MAC of local involved residents voted six to nothing against this project. But because we are unincorporated, this commission, which includes six non-local residents, can change the blueprint of our community that was developed by stakeholders living in our community. Please deny this project as presented and listen to the people, the community.
Can I ask a question, quick? The next person come up, but is there anybody here that is on the MAC, Granite Bay MAC? Oh, it's that person there, so, okay. Yeah, and Sandra took a few extra minutes, but that's good. She was on the community plan. So if you want, need a few extra minutes on, maybe to speak for the MAC as well.
Yes, that's why I'm here. I'm Suzanne Jones, past chair of Granite Bay MAC. And I do want to address you all and ask if you did receive a copy of the MAC, the letter that the MAC wrote to address these issues.
The one-page letter?
Pardon?
The one-page letter has four items on it, I think, or?
No, no, the MAC wrote a two-page letter to you.
Maybe it was two.
There you go. You only have one page?
Well, front and back, okay.
Oh, okay.
It was at the end.
Good enough, because the second page has the meat of the issues here. The comment was made that traffic was one of our major concerns, and that is quite contrary. If you look at our letter, number four is our traffic concerns. It's really at the very bottom of the list. Number one is the community plan, the plan development that really requires creative and thoughtful design in our neighborhoods, which is not going to happen with the destruction. They're going to flatten the land, take out all the trees, and, you know, take out the grass and put up a parking lot, remember that? Then number two, the vesting tentative map plan requires densities that are very inconsistent with our community plan. And then the design detail, they said, "Well, we never present a design detail." That is of grave concern because, as you see this that you were given, indicating what, an idea of what they're proposing to build, being thirty-six-foot-tall buildings with a ten-foot soundwall, we're still going to have twenty-six feet of building sticking out above that soundwall. And Eldorado Hills may have a development similar to that. So does East Roosevelt. But the thing is, it's in the heart of a community, in the heart of a housing development, not here. In this case, Sierra College in Eureka is like a gateway to Granite Bay. And these monstrosities are not attractive. Have you been to Vacaville? Do you see what they've done to Vacaville? They've done the same thing, but only three stories. They're monstrosities. They're, I can't say enough about it. This is not what our community plan provided for, to preserve the aesthetic quality and the premier community that Granite Bay is supposed to be. And I know there's mention about SAICOG and high-density and all this stuff. East Roosevelt's got tons and tons of acreage out there. Put your high-density out there. There's no reason to take a small, you know, unincorporated area of Granite Bay and try to jam it full of houses. This project and the park at Granite Bay is the same problem. And to say that traffic is, the, yeah, the studies are not going to impact traffic. I live in Tree Like Village, and twice a day, it's gridlock, and we sit and wait for a half an hour just to get out to Sierra College Boulevard. So, I mean, I don't know who does these things. But their comment was, "This is the least impactful." You know, if that's your requirement... You know, if that's your requirement, I'm sorry. It shouldn't be the least impactful, it should be the best product, the best plan development for the community in keeping with everything that you've heard here. And I did want to say that please don't discount or disregard the time, the energy, the participation of the community members and the MAC members, all of us. We were there for hours the other night. To say that, you know, traffic was our only concern, it was not. We were there for three hours at our meeting on this, as well as the development, you know, the updating of our community plan. Our community members and our MAC members spent several years updating that. There was a lot of thought and consideration that went into that. So if you are not residents of Granite Bay, please consider what you will be doing to Granite Bay if you approve this as it is. We do not oppose progress. We do not, you know, we don't oppose that. But what we want is something aesthetic. Half of that development, if you go back to that, the single-family homes, half of that development is very nice. But the duplex, the high-rise, the look, the aesthetics, just what it brings to Granite Bay and that part of the area is not in keeping with anything about Granite Bay. And I'm an original homeowner in Tree Lake Village, I've been there since 1991. So I've seen this develop, and I was there before the high school. I can tell you how traffic was before and how traffic is after and how traffic is now. It's a huge impact on our community. The lights, the baseball games, it's a huge impact. So everybody that said it was not going to impact, they're saying this is not going to have a significant impact. It will. It'll have a significant impact on many things. So I would just say also too that please help us send a message to future developers to please comply with our community plan, comply with our wishes, bring thoughtful development. Don't just rush in and try to jam as many residences as you can on a development. And I thank you very much for your time and...
If you can sign up, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up and representing the MAC. We did get two pages, and I did read that in the back. I forgot that I had read the first page, but I remember there was four items, but it was on the second page.
Second page, thank you.
Someone else want to comment? Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Victor Beckett. I live on Sierra College on Old Auburn. I'll be directly affected by traffic from this project. First, I want to, we want to encourage development in our community. We want to encourage landowners to build and improve our community. In the same time, they have bought their properties with a prior knowledge and expertise of what could be done and what could not be done. So what's happening here is that this project being proposed by a representative, and it would not recommend putting an entrance on Sierra College. There's another project next door to us, a park at Granite Bay. The same representative was promoting putting an entrance on Sierra College. So there's an inconsistency. The other point is that I want you to look at the cumulative effect of traffic. So if this project slows traffic by one or two seconds, the next one being put on Sierra College will slow traffic exponentially, four or five seconds. The third one that's being proposed also on Sierra College and Old Auburn will slow traffic by another six, seven seconds. So as a planning commission, I want you to look at the collective picture of almost 10 projects requiring redesignation or rezoning of the Granite Bay Community Plan. The last recommendation, I'm recommending that the developers read and comply with the litter and the spirit of the Granite Bay Community Plan and to make projects that the community actually needs. Talk to the community members and leaders and see what the vision for the community. And this is the easiest way and the best way, and everybody will walk away happy with it. Thank you very much.
Another person?
Hi, I'm Mariana Beckett, and I'm also near Sierra College in Old Auburn. And I wanted to agree with everything that's been said before. In the interest of time, I don't want to repeat it all, but I would like to highlight, we don't want to go with maybes and probablys, especially on things like drainage. We need real, clear plans and real ways of handling these issues, especially looking at it not in things like 10-year storms or 10-year possibilities or 25-year storms or possibilities, but looking at the worst-case scenario, like the 100-year storm. Because that 100-year storm will eventually happen, and then you could end up with a disaster on your hands if you have not planned for those worst-case scenarios. I did want to ask, how many of you on the planning commission read through the comment letters from the community? Okay, thank you for doing that.
Just to let everybody know, all of the commission members are very diligent about reading all the letters and emails that come in before our projects.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate that. So please take into consideration what the people who actually are living there are saying about the issues, the environmental issues and concerns. And also, please honor the work and the decision that the Granite Bay MAC has made to override them, basically as a slap in the face, and it would be saying that there is no point for the Granite Bay MAC to be there if things are going to be decided against the will of the community anyway. Thank you.
Is there any new comments from anyone in the audience? Okay, one more then. The hand came up late, I was about ready to say closing public comment, but that's okay.
I didn't want to get mugged. I'm actually in favor of this project, and I've been listening to these comments. And I live in Hillsborough. My name is Jeff Sartz.
Your name?
Jeff Sartz, S-A-R-T-Z.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the first time.
And I do live in Hillsborough, and I've built my house over 20 years ago. I've been past this site every day for 20 years. I've seen the community grow. And my thinking is, doing what's proposed is a lot better than having a vacant commercial building on that corner. And so I think what they're proposing, putting the half-plexes in and the homes, is a lot better idea. I think once it's matured, the trees will be in, and these guys are complaining about the looks. I think the looks of a nice-looking half-plex would be a lot better than a commercial building that's sitting there vacant. So as far as traffic's concerned, people are complaining about the schools during, when schools open. I live in Hillsborough. If they come out, turn left on Hillsborough, turn right on East Roseville Parkway, and they get on Sierra College, it would take them 30 seconds to do that little route, rather than wait for cars to pass. And I don't think the impact would matter at all. It'd be better than having a commercial there, so. And the big reason I'm for that is I have two kids that graduate from high school. They cannot afford to live in Grand Bay. They have kids, like being in the school district, and they're kind of shut out. Having a half-plex project like that, there'd be a chance that they could afford to live and send their kids in the Grand Bay area. Rather than building million-dollar homes, which is being built, that's all they can, they're shut out.
Okay, thank you.
I lived there long enough, I could afford it. And today, if I had to move, I probably couldn't afford it. So that's the big concern. The school population's decreasing, we're busing in more kids. And I think for the community itself, they need to get more young families in there and get it going again because right now, it's just, you know, they're busing kids in, their kids are coming from out, without the district that come to school. And that's not a good thing, so.
Thank you.
So I think just the housing loan affordability is well worth that.
Thank you. Could you sign in if you wish? Okay, one more person, then. You encouraged somebody else to get up there.
Am I the last one?
Huh?
My name is Craig Burris, and I, my wife and I reside at 5021 Waverly Court, Granite Bay. And we are 25-year veterans of Granite Bay. I've listened to the opposition to this, and I have to say, I understand some of their concerns. But I do think it's a piece of land that's going to be developed. And I have to agree with this gentleman that I do not want to see another strip center there. We don't need more subways and hair salons and, you know, liquor stores. And I don't think it's appropriate for a two- or three-story office building. I don't think it's appropriate for a light industrial park. And I don't want to see apartments there either. And so it might not be perfect, but I think it's the best solution to a property that I do believe will be developed. The half-plexes have given us some diversity. I think if we keep them up on, close to Sierra College, it won't affect anybody's land values or diminish our properties in any way. So I'll keep my comments short here. I had a few other things, but I know we're running a little late. So on behalf of my wife and I, we support this project. We think it will be welcomed in the community for the most part. I think it will be somewhat of an asset to Granite Bay. I like what the developer has done in widening the roads. It gives it a nice feel. And I think with the right landscaping and some other treatments on there, it will be a nice entree to the Granite Bay residents. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Are you the last one? Yes. Okay, after that, you're going to hear the gavel.
Good. Mike Young. I live on Farsham Place, which is to the east. And we've been there since we built our house in 1979. So we've seen quite a few changes from two stoplights to get to the highway, two stop signs on Douglas to now this crazy stuff that goes on. I have no problem with the changing of the commercial to the half-plexes on the western side, as long as they can do this without altering the hill and without taking down all those trees. So I would say I'm very much in favor of that, but let's do it in keeping with the Granite Bay General Plan. On the eastern side, I see no reason to change this from 2.8 units per acre to five, other than greed. Please, let's not have this super-density go on as we're moving more toward the larger lots. Let's kind of have it go as the Granite Bay General Plan had it originally. Thank you.
I like, I think it was going down from two, on the eastward ones, from 2.8 down the two. The one, it goes, the other one's going up to 5.5.
We have 2.3 houses, one house for 2.3 acres as we go towards the east. That's what I'm referring to.
Okay. Okay, close the public hearing now at this time. I would, wait, before you get up, Marcus, I'd like to ask staff and George just, we've heard a lot of comments on the general plan. And the EIR has prepared, said it would not significantly alter the Granite Bay General Plan. In fact, in 2012, I think the density, overall density of the whole Granite Bay General Plan was reduced, somewhat, at least residentially it was. From with those comments, can you comment on that, or maybe EJ?
So maybe I'll speak to the update of the community plan. Several people in the audience today were a critical part of that update. And if you all remember during that time, it was decided that there were not going to be any proposed land uses or land use changes looked at. It was just going to be an update to the policy document. The concern was at the time, you know, there's, we had a number of requests. We did a solicitation across Granite Bay to see if anybody was interested in changing their land use. We did get quite a few requests to change land use. But the overall sentiment of the community was that they did not want to entertain those land uses at the time, and the decided, and the decision was to just update the policy document. So that's what happened. With that said, you know, we did have discussions that, you know, there's a lot of infill properties throughout Granite Bay and that, you know, once the plan is adopted, we're probably going to see those requested land use changes come in, and that's kind of where we are today. So we're, you know, we're looking at them one by one. So that's something that the, you know, planning commission will have to consider.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Ludica.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to go through a few of the comments that were made. I'll just go through order that they were received in terms of responses. There was a question about, first, regarding Greyhawk II and that they're preserving strap ravine property around it in perpetuity. So are we. We have a 404 permit, we have a conservation easement that preserves it perpetuity. We're, had to fund the endowment that pays for monitoring and maintenance of that that continues from the Greyhawk II all the way over to the west side of our parcel. So we are also preserving two acres on the site in perpetuity. There was a question about that the comment was made is that the single-family rate, which was used for Greyhawk II, was not used in this project in the traffic analysis. The traffic analysis for the portion of the project that matches Greyhawk II, and I'm reading from page 16 of Ken Anderson's traffic report dated February 25, 2016, table 5. The single-family, those 28 units, use the exact same trip rate as did Greyhawk II. Exact same trip rate for single-family dwellings. For the condominium, the town has the half-plex, you don't use that rate. You use the IT rates, is what you do. It's used all over the state of California, everywhere you do these analyses. When you have that type of unit, you have that type of density, you're going to use the half-plex unit. And again, given what we've seen in the marketplace in terms of evidence and the record, the evidence and the record supports the use of that because you will have some folks that are there that are going to be empty nesters or single people occupying those units, as we've seen in the villas at Tree Lake. On the issue about people parking in Greyhawk II, Greyhawk II isn't finished, it's under construction. If you go through there, there's quite a number of cars. It's folks that are working on the project. They don't park elsewhere or carpool in, they're coming from all over the region. So the workers, yeah, they're parking on the street. No ifs, ands, or buts. They're constructing the project, they're constructing homes. All the framers and sheet rockers and roofers and everyone else, they're all in there, and they're going to be parking on the street during construction. On the, going back to, let's see. There was a comment made, you know, why aren't we doing an EIR? Again, we seek, requires you do an analysis based on evidence and the record as to whether you have a significant impact or not. The environmental document, the initial study found there wasn't. There was mention that they're doing one for the park at Granite Bay, which I also represent. That project involves a community plan amendment. In terms of a general plan, a community plan amendment, this does not. And so again, there are apples and oranges. I do have to say that in my 30 years of practice, I've never had someone read one of my favorite stories from Dr. Seuss at a podium. So that was first, I used to read that story to my kids. As to Mr. Hart's comment, obviously, as we go through improvement plans and design, that's when you get into the details of dealing with overland release. I work with a number of engineers in his office, and that will be their typical response in exactly the same situation is when you get down to engineering, design-level details of the improvement plans, that's when you're working on that level of details. Next, it said, "There was a question for folks turning left out of Hillsborough heading west on Eureka Road. Will there be a turn lane for us?" Yes, there will. That's the design. In terms of the turn lane that'll be created, there will be an opportunity for folks to be able to turn left out of Hillsborough onto Eureka Road.
I was wondering if Marcus could ask about that. Is there going to be, as they come across, coming into the westbound lane of Eureka Road to head towards Sierra College, is there going to be like a safety pocket for them to go over?
Is it a gall wing, Ken, or Greg? One of you answer that? It's a two-way left. It's a two-way left, so people have a free lane. So you're not having to sort of park at a small pocket. You're coming into a two-way turn lane, and to be able to go left, so you'll be able to wait for traffic. If it's, you know, traffic's free coming from the west-east, that's open. You can get in that turn lane, wait for there to be a break in the traffic to hit the Sierra College.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the design currently is just for a left turn lane into the project site. I believe that was discussed with the city of Roseville, if I'm mistaken. And so the agreement was for the project access to have a left turn lane in rather than a two-way left turn lane.
The discussions we had, the last discussions we had was a two-lane. They were okay with the two-lane, at least my discussions. Was that there, because that was the discussion, whether you're going to have a left turn lane or a two-lane. They were fine with the two-way there. Also, Eureka Road, and I'm going to cite from the Granite Bay Community Plan, Eureka Road under, on page 133, table 9.6.3. Eureka Road is classified in this stretch of Eureka Road from Sierra College. Eureka Road is classified in this stretch of Eureka Road from Sierra College to Wellington as a minor arterial. And it's elsewhere described as a collector road. It is not a rural lane, as you would hear, hear phrase to you. It's a, in this stretch of Eureka Road, it's a minor arterial. On the issue of building heights, there was comment made that one, we were proposing, the pictures we showed you, no, that we were saying those could physically fit in our building envelope. We're not proposing that. We're not a home builder. But in terms of on the building envelopes we have, that that's what can fit in terms of a structure. We are not proposing three stories. We accepted the two-story limitation on the entire project. Staff conditioned that. Just recognize, as one of the last speakers mentioned, if this is an office building, it's 50 feet. That's the, that's what could be built on that 50 feet, which is at least three stories on that, on that site. There was a project, one comment was made about that there's another project near, I believe, Mr. Beckett, who were you saying that there's an entrance on the Sierra College? The issue about entrance on Sierra College is where unless there's, if there's not another opportunity, there's no other access points but Sierra College Boulevard. They allow that, but it's based on location. That one's not adjacent to a traffic signal heading downhill. In terms of when you have a signal in a turn lane, that's, that's really the issue. As to the comment about asking you to look at other projects in cumulative, that's what the cumulative analysis does. That's required by the county on every project that comes through to look at those cumulative impacts. That's why you have existing plus project analysis. And then you have an exi, cumulative, all those projects that are out there plus build out of the community plan and then projects that are known out there plus the project to see what impacts that might have. Let's see. I think that is all the comments that were raised in the, in the hearing, at least the questions that we heard that would be apropos for me to address.
Any questions for Mr. Leduca? Okay, thank you. I'm, oh, you're thinking, oh, you want, you think you might have a question or you're thinking?
I'm waiting.
Oh, you're waiting, now you're waiting? It's in wait mode?
I have a question for George if I can.
Yeah, I have one question.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
After they get through huddling over there. I'm, oh, I'm sorry. No, grab a little pow-wow.
George, at the 36-foot height that we're talking about, that's standard for any single family residential in the South Placer area, is it not? That's not an increase in allowable height?
It's, it's not an uncommon height. 36 feet is pretty common in residential areas. The two common heights are 30 and 36. Smaller lots generally have 30. And then, as you move forward, a little bit larger, getting to 36, very common.
George, I'd like to ask you a question on the trees. You said you were mentioning about, you know, you get so many dollars for inch of, of tree.
Right.
But when we analyzed the Bigford Ranch redo of last year, we were talking about the canopy.
We are. And, and there's two, there's two mitigation requirements.
Rather than individual tree counting. How's this address that?
Okay. So, there's two, there's two mitigations. And I probably wasn't clear about this when I talked about it. There's 3.74 acres approximately of trees being removed, okay? They will be required to purchase canopy area at a two-to-one rate. So, they have to pay for twice 3.4 acres at the going rate, which varies over time. It's 23, 24, sometimes it's $26,000. However, we still require, when you have a tree in that canopy area that's being removed that's above 24 inches, 24 inches or above, I should say, that you pay for that one additionally at $100 an inch. And I believe that in that 3.74 acres, there's five trees that, I don't know the approximate size, but they're either 24 inches or above. So, that'll be $100, $100 an inch plus the purchase of twice the area that's being removed.
Okay, that's how the canopy formulas work? I thought.
Yeah.
Canopy was supposed to be preserving more of the natural trees and then taking out more of the natural trees.
And, and, and that's, that's part of the issue. I mean, you have the part along Strap Ravine. The trees sort of come funnel down, like they come along Strap Ravine and then they funnel down towards Eureka Road. And as you can see, the part that funnels down towards Eureka Road, it would be fairly difficult in my mind, if you were going to do a commercial development or something, to preserve any significant amount of that tree based on the slope. It, there's some slope that needs to be flattened out and that sort of thing. So, what's, what's left to us when you propose a project of this density is the mitigation, which we've determined brings it to a less than significant level.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add to that, commissioners, I mean, this is consistent with what we did on Bigford Ranch. It's consistent with what we did on Rancho Del Oro, another project in Granite Bay. You know, typically with a site of this size, you know, you don't, you don't have that oak woodland canopy, but in this case they do. And so, that's how, why they have to mitigate for, per acre too.
Okay, thank you.
If this was developed as a commercial site, odds are it would be at least this much of an impact to the trees, maybe even potentially more. Is that correct?
In my best estimation, yes, that's correct.
Which is obviously it's approved to do that now.
Have any other questions, Wayne?
No.
No? Any questions? Any additional questions? Yeah, maybe a, a mention was mentioned that only one person on this commission lives in Granite Bay. And I think that's you, Jeffrey.
That would be me.
So, maybe I wish, look towards you for some additional comments.
I, I do live in Granite Bay and have for, since about 1972. So, I have watched it grow, have participated in some of that growth and have seen some impacts that, that have been positive and negative as, as we all have. I think that the, it was disappointing when the general plan was updated that land uses were not addressed at the time. I think that it, the, the fear of the one at a time coming in and whether or not cumulative impacts are being properly analyzed is, is a legitimate concern. But it was a choice that was consciously made by the community to deal with just updating everything and leaving land uses to come in on their own. And so, while it's frustrating, this is, this is the result of what we, we elected to do amongst ourselves. I think, you know, traffic around the school at school time is tough. I have two kids that go to the school. And, and it is tough getting in and out of there. And I think that it's always going to be tough getting in and out of there. And as projects grow and as the community grows, it's going to get a little tougher. Changes have been made to the original designs of the Roseville Parkway, which was originally designed with no stop signs in it to let things go through like a parkway was. Traffic has been slowed down. Stop signs have been put in, additional stop signs in front of the school. All this has had that impact. The parents that drop their kids off at the corner of Eureka and Wellington so they don't have to go in front of the school are a large problem of that. The parents who wait at East Roseville Parkway on the side of the road parked in the bike lane where their kids to walk out are, are, well, they're making it easier on themselves. They're making that problem a little worse for the rest of us who commute through there also. It, it is frustrating. But this project, I don't believe is going to have, denying this project wouldn't change that any and approving the project, I don't believe would, would significantly make it any worse. My preference, living out there, I would rather see some tastefully designed residential units than a retail center. Whether or not it could be rented out is, I mean, I, my personal opinion, I agree with the applicant that it would be a tough sell to, to have a commercial center there and be able to market it for the kind of rent you would need to get just to cover your costs and, and have the kind of businesses fill it that we would want to see in Granite Bay. And, you know, I mean, we, we want, if you see what goes in the new centers lately, it's smoke shops, it's tattoo parlors, massage parlors, are the ones coming out filling, you know? You probably have a dispensary wanting to go in there when that ordinance gets taken care of. It, it's not, I, I would much rather see that. To me, and I've grown up here, I moved out to Granite Bay when I was 12 years old. It is a beautiful real estate. But what's made Granite Bay good is the people that are in it, including the ones who came after I did. And I would like to think that that will continue with who comes in newer communities. Trees are a precious resource. Their county is getting their pound of flesh for the oak trees. And when the rest of it's all built out, developed and landscaped, there'll be more trees in there than there was to start with. Trees grow back. Trees can be planted. There'll be plenty of them. You know, so that's kind of my two cents worth for the penny it's probably really worth.
Okay, thank you, Jeffrey.
Appreciate it, Pat.
Any questions? Go ahead, Larry, you've been kind of quiet today. Must had a rough trip over the mountains or something.
No, it wasn't any snow, it was okay.
Okay.
I guess I, my question is going to be to our planning director, I guess, at this point. And that is, just for the benefit of those in the audience, I guess, I'm probably the only one left around that was here for the original Granite Bay general plan back in the 70s. And it, so I'm familiar with, from that point forward, I've been involved a lot. And I guess I'd have to ask the question of our planning director if, if, and a part of it's because I represent the Tahoe area for Placer County. And we live in a world of how mu, what's our holding capacity? How many, what's, what is there a limit that the plan envisioned was going to attain at some point in the future? And I guess I'm just asking a generic question. Is the Granite Bay general plan still within its sideboards, so to speak?
I think that the fair answer to that question is yes, because doing the community plan update, I think what was realized is because of, you know, Granite Bay's diversity of natural resources and the way, the, the natural layout of the land, the properties that have been developed, you know, the majority, if not all of them, have not been developed to their maximum potential as far as, you know, density and number of units. So, this one coming in, does that put it over the edge of what was allowed under the community plan? You know, the answer would be no.
Well, I, I have to think also about a recent meeting I happened to have with the governor. And he was explaining to me that there's going to be 7 million more people between San Francisco and Reno in this corridor that happens to be Granite Bay. And, and he says, you know, we're, I don't know what we're going to do with them, where they're going to live, how they're going to get water, where they're, how they're going to eat. But somehow they're going to be there and there's no stopping them. So, I guess the thing we have to think about is if we have to, if we're going to be forced to accommodate those people, what's the best way to do that so that it's the least painful for the most people? And I'm not sure the answer to that. I, I look at this project and it kind of makes sense to me because it's, it's a fairly respectable looking project. But yet, it's in an area that we started out with 10-acre minimums and we've, I mean, we now have 2.3 and less, you know? That we're the zoning for the whole region at one time. But we can't all, in the future, we can't just keep carving up more land that may be good agricultural land or have other better uses for housing when we have, when we have projects like this that could be infill and maybe work okay. I don't know what the answer is. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a gotcha. And I, I think we've created our own, our own problem because we've created a community that is very desirable. I mean, you know, if you tell people you live in Granite Bay, it's, it's a, it's a very pleasant experience. And it's unfortunate that everybody wants to live there now. I mean, it's like Hillsborough and San Francisco or the peninsula, everybody wants to live there. They don't want to live in most of Oakland or other areas. And so, it's just human nature. And I don't know how you're going to control it. I think if you can do a good job and much the way you explained it, Jeff, is to try to make it still be compatible with the rest of the community, that may the best, be the best we can do at this point because we're being overrun. We're just simply being overrun with people. I don't know what, how you stop them or what, where, how you do it. But there, as long as California's got the climate and the weather and the water and the jobs, the people are going to come here somehow. They're going to find a way. So, I think if we can accommodate them in a reasonably good fashion on a broader scale, I see this as perhaps beneficial in that way because we can't build all estate-type houses. There's going to be a mixture for everybody, I guess. And that's where I'm getting at.
I think the halfplexes will be a very, very well-received product. I think that there's a lot of market for people who don't want to be married to an acre of lawn and 6,500 square feet of home to maintain. They want to travel. They want to get a little rest after their kids have moved out of the house and, and enjoy life other than in, in home maintenance and yard maintenance. And, and, and I think they will be, be very well-received by, you know, people who want to come in and make a contribution to the community, by people who already live in the community who would like to downsize and, and still be here.
I think as the community grows and ages, you'll find that the high school probably won't be busy. We've found that in my community at Tahoe, we don't, our high school has shrunk down to nearly nothing. And it's because of the cross-section of the people that are living there. You know, people that are 50 years old don't have kids anymore or they're wrong. And so, you're just, they just, they don't have any. And it's, and it's a strange phenomenon. We all got together and had to pass bond issues for the schools and build new schools, and now they're sitting empty. And I think that's inevitable in a lot of communities.
Right. And I, I think that's a good point that we need to consider is that, you know, because the high school has been mentioned a number of times there as a contributor to the traffic issue. And many of those are being transported in from West Roseville because their schools are obviously overcrowded. And so, they're trying to find places to move those students. And obviously, Eureka has, has the capacity to handle them now. But there is a plan to build a new high school in the next few years in West Roseville that'll then accommodate those people and they won't have to make that long trek from West Roseville over to Eureka, which will then obviously take a lot of the traffic away. And again, I agree with you, the population of that high school is probably going to continue to diminish in that area if we don't provide the kind of housing to bring in younger families. So, I think I would have more of a concern for this project if it was deeper into Granite Bay. I think if you're going to have this kind of a project, having it close to an arterial, two pretty major arterials is probably the best location that you could put this kind of a project in. And so, I, I'm sensitive to the issues of the community, but I really think that we have to take a broader view of what, what our, you know, wonderful Placer County, especially West Placer County, needs are for the future. And so, I will take a stab at what we're going to do here and see where we go as a commission.
I'd like to just make one, I'd like to make just one comment. First of all, I want to thank everybody that came today, either in support or in opposition. I think you'll find that the rest of the commission members, and I'll just speak for myself, they, they've spoken for themselves. But I'm a resident of Roseville, lifelong resident of Roseville, I might say. And I've been on the Roseville Planning Commission and on the city council for 17 years over, off and on over the last 35 years. And sometimes I've been, when I was, especially when I was on the planning commission where we took a very strong stand on something and went to the council and either was a supporter, sometimes it was overturned. Either way, it goes both ways. But I do believe that the, I do have an issue, I think, with the trees. But I think it's been explained fairly well by, by staff, extremely well, I should say, by staff. But it is, it is very sensitive when we come up against these issues. But it is, when, I don't know how many years ago, but I've already forgotten the details, when, when Hillsborough, that area came in to want to be annexed, the city of Roseville, I actually voted against that coming to the city of Roseville because I did respect the Granite Bay plan. And I wanted to, and also, Sierra College Boulevard seemed to make a natural barrier or natural dividing line there. But I was overruled. So, so I have a respect for other community plans and other people, plans and efforts on those. But I do believe that the commercial especially, not so much that, well, it's been expressed that there's a lot of vacant building. And we have them in Roseville too. And that's what, one of my concerns is we should fill up what we have before we build new. So, so I think putting something in like, like a halfplexes is, and not apartments, for example, would, is a, is a, is a compromise. All these things sometimes end up being compromises, so. But as far as the high school, I have had communications with the Roseville High School district and they are. looking for additional funds. I'm not sure if we're gonna have a ballot measure in the, on the, on the Ju, on the Sep, uh, November ballot, but, but they are looking seriously at building that school out in the West Roseville. And I live, just to let you know where I live, I live in the old part of town, um, off of Main Street, so I've, I've been in, in the central part of Roswell for many, many years, but and development has, in Roswell, has increased traffic on some of our, even our s- small city streets. We tried to build extra roads around, but it seems like people want to take shortcuts and this kind of stuff, so. Anyway, I do respect the people that are commenting today. I also want to thank you for, for the way you respected us. No one yelled at us, no one, uh, you know, r- really threw anything at us, which they normally don't, but still, I do want to re, uh, say the crowd has been, actually, the five years, the six years that I've been on this, on this commission, they have been really respectful, and I appreciate that too. You were gonna make a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion. My motion is that we, uh, recommend to the Board of Supervisors adopting a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program prepared for the project. We approve the rezoning of the, uh, parcel of zero four eight dash one five one dash zero eight eight dash zero 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 to R S B eighteen P D to two point eight. Approved, uh, the vesting, uh, tentative subdivision map and approved the conditional use permit. Anything else I need to add?
With all the conditions?
Subject to the conditions and the findings set forth in the staff report.
So move.
Been moved in second, no, there's a, been moved in second and roll call?
Mr. Curry's absent. Mr. Severson?
Mr. Irvis, somebody, no.
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent. Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson's absent. Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Rakuchi?
Yes. Motion carried. Now, this goes, this goes directly to the Board of Supervisors, so there's no appeal or something like that. Okay, thank you.
That's correct, and for the folks in the audience, they'll probably be scheduled before the board anywhere between the next forty-five and ninety days.
Thank you. We're gonna have at least a five-minute break right now, so.
Thank you.
And, uh, we'll be back.
but then also Melly, Mellie, Mary Keller, from our stormwater program. So this permit and the program that we're talking about, um, is, includes multiple, um, layers within our departments, so, and between divisions. So, um, we'll hope to do our best to answer all your questions about the manual. So I'm gonna kick off, and first thing off the bat, we're gonna talk a little bit about why we're doing the West Placer Stormwater Manual, and remind you that I think in spring of twenty fifteen, we were here and gave you a little bit of an update of what was going on with stormwater and stormwater management. Um, but as part of the Placer County Conservation Plan and as part of our NPDS permit, um, we've come, those two programs have come together to address Clean Water Act requirements. And in particular, we're gonna be talking a lot today about our NPDS MS four permit. Although this manual and these requirements will also serve for the future Placer County Conservation Program and Aquatic Resources Program. Funding sources came from the Conservation Program, some grant funding, and then funding came from the stormwater program. So again, both of these programs are working jointly to achieve stormwater quality management. Um, again, stormwater regulations changed in two thousand thirteen. This map is showing, of course, Placer County. The area we're gonna be focusing on is this orange area, the west, what's known as the west slope permit area. Hopefully, most of you are all familiar with this area, the western Placer County, but does not include the northwest part of the county, mostly the south and west part. And then the other part of the county, just so you know, the program also, this program and this manual right now will not cover it, but the other part of the county that's regulated is the, of course, the Tahoe Basin. And the regulations for our new MS four permit took place in two thousand thirteen. And in July of twenty fifteen, we were required to start showing a stormwater reduction calculator and implementing what's called low-impact development standards. So this manual is working towards that one compliance point in the overall larger permit. Again, just getting you familiar with where the boundary of the permit is, the orange area shown on the screen is the permit area. And then we've also included both Lincoln's, um, general plan growth areas and our West Placer, um, specific plan growth areas. So it is anticipated that all of those areas coming in, um, will comply with the stormwater permit in this manual requirements. Uh, what are we talking about? Stormwater? Most people, um, are familiar with the typical metal, breeze, bacterias, and making sure that stormwater is treated before it runs off a site. A lot of what low-impact development is talking about is dealing with suspended solids and slowing down the flow, uh, on-site. So we're getting to a little bit of the discussion of what that is. Um, and to kind of to take a step back as to what's actually going on now with stormwater, a conventional way of looking at stormwater, which is planning commission, you guys are familiar with this. You have a subdivision, it's got a street and housing, and they run all these pipes, and they develop these stormwater ponds out here, and that's how they typically deal with stormwater on-site, right? We put it in pipes, we get it off as quickly as possible, and it gets treated, and we deal with it in another location. And really, um, convey and collect is the old way of thinking about stormwater. And this new approach, and I say new, it's been around about twenty, twenty-five years, a lot of communities have been doing this, is to do a lot more on-site infiltration, to use the natural features of the site to deal with stormwater flows and treatments. So here, again, looking at the same schematic plan, um, you have your roadways, you have your communities. These now become what are considered low-impact development features, where they're actually, instead of piping, they're infiltrating into the soils. And then you'll end up with, you don't need the holding ponds in the, you know, away from the subdivision out in a, a further location. It would be anticipated that the majority, if not all, of the stormwater runoff would be treated or infiltrated on-site. So that's really kind of what we're talking about, disconnecting, slowing the stormwater down. Uh, you don't want, you know, the faster water goes, physics, it collects more debris, more debris causes more erosion, more erosion causes more debris, and so on and so forth as it goes down the water system. And really kind of what are we talking about? What does this look like? What will you guys expect to see as projects come forward with low-impact development designs? Really curb cuts, very common. This is one in Sacramento where the stormwater is just running into what looks like a landscape planter. And that landscape planter is providing all the infiltration and treatment. Um, and then it's also, of course, been designed to overflow as needed into probably a conventional storm drain system. Downtown Auburn, if you guys have been there lately, they've done a, some redevelopment, and they put in low-impact development features. Again, the simple stormwater flows into the curb cut into a treatment feature. Uh, permeable pavement, water flows straight into the sidewalks and infiltrates on-site. Uh, this is, um, Rock Creek Plaza. They've got on-treatment bioswales. Uh, another common practice is permeable pavement, um, and that's what these features are showing. This has been going on up in the Lake Tahoe area. There's quite a few of these features. Again, the pavement, concrete, permeable concrete, and bioswales for treatment. Uh, this is an example of a redevelopment site where before you had lots of, uh, stormwater just collecting and, uh, oil and other pollutants collecting, and they came in redevelopment, put the curb cuts in, and now have all that water being treated on, in a facility.
Mind if I ask a question?
Sure.
How do you make concrete permeable?
Call it asphalt.
Well, how does that, how does water even get through that?
Oh, it's, it's made in such a way that it's, it's like a sponge.
Pixie dust.
And it's, even though it's rigid, the water can permeate right through it.
But can you do that with concrete?
Yes. To a lesser degree, I think, yeah.
That's wild. I didn't know that. Thank you.
Did Larry just answer the question?
If you'd charity me extra for today's presentation.
Great, thank you. Uh, some other common things that you might see more homes and communities doing, rather, commercial sites, disconnecting downspouts and running them into a vegetated area, or collecting, um, into cisterns and rain barrels. Um, these features, again, they become part of the community, and so, uh, West Sacramento, you know, and their civic center-
I want to introduce some other staff that's also here with me. I have Rebecca Tabor, who's gonna share in this presentation, but then also Melly, Mary Keller, from our Stormwater Program. So, this permit and the program that we're talking about is includes multiple layers within our departments, so, and between divisions. So, we'll hope to do our best to answer all your questions about the manual. So, I'm gonna kick off, and first thing off the bat, we're gonna talk a little bit about why we're doing the West Placer Stormwater Manual, and remind you that I think in spring of 2015, we were here and gave you a little bit of an update of what was going on with stormwater and stormwater management. But as part of the Placer County Conservation Plan and as part of our NPDS permit, we've come, those two programs have come together to address Clean Water Act requirements. And in particular, we're gonna be talking a lot today about our NPDS MS4 permit. Although this manual and these requirements will also serve for the future Placer County Conservation Program and Aquatic Resources Program. Funding sources came from the Conservation Program, some grant funding, and then funding came from the Stormwater Program. So again, both of these programs are working jointly to achieve stormwater quality management. Again, stormwater regulations changed in 2013. This map is showing, of course, Placer County. The area we're gonna be focusing on is this orange area, the west, what's known as the west slope permit area. Hopefully, most of you are all familiar with this area, the western Placer County, but does not include the northwest part of the county, mostly the southwest part. And then the other part of the county, just so you know, the program also, this program and this manual right now will not cover it, but the other part of the county that's regulated is the, of course, the Tahoe Basin. And the regulations for our new MS4 permit took place in 2013. And in July of 2015, we were required to start showing a stormwater reduction calculator and implementing what's called Low-Impact Development standards. So, this manual is working towards that one compliance point in the overall larger permit. Again, just getting you familiar with where the boundary of the permit is, the orange area shown on the screen is the permit area, and then we've also included both Lincoln's general plan growth areas and our West Placer specific plan growth areas. So, it is anticipated that all of those areas coming in will comply with the stormwater permit in this manual requirements. What are we talking about? Stormwater. Most people are familiar with the typical metal, breeze, bacterias, and making sure that stormwater is treated before it runs off a site. A lot of what Low-Impact Development is talking about is dealing with suspended solids and slowing down the flow onsite. So, we're getting into a little bit of the discussion of what that is. And to kind of take a step back as to what's actually going on now with stormwater, a conventional way of looking at stormwater, which is Planning Commission, you guys are familiar with this. You have a subdivision, it's got a street and housing, and they run all these pipes, and they develop these stormwater ponds out here, and that's how they typically deal with stormwater onsite, right? We put it in pipes, we get it off as quickly as possible, and it gets treated, and we deal with it in another location. And really, convey and collect is the old way of thinking about stormwater. And this new approach, and I say new, it's been around about 20, 25 years, a lot of communities have been doing this, is to do a lot more onsite infiltration, to use the natural features of the site to deal with stormwater flows and treatments. So here, again, looking at the same schematic plan, you have your roadways, you have your communities. These now become what are considered Low-Impact Development features, where they're actually, instead of piping, they're infiltrating into the soils. And then you'll end up with, you don't need the holding ponds in the, you know, away from the subdivision out in a further location. It would be anticipated that the majority, if not all, of the stormwater runoff would be treated or infiltrated onsite. So, that's really kind of what we're talking about, disconnecting, slowing the stormwater down. You don't want, you know, the faster water goes, physics, it collects more debris. More debris causes more erosion, more erosion causes more debris, and so on and so forth as it goes down the water system. And really, kind of, what are we talking about? What does this look like? What will you guys expect to see as projects come forward with Low-Impact Development designs? Really, curb cuts, very common. This is one in Sacramento, where the stormwater is just running into what looks like a landscape planter. And that landscape planter is providing all the infiltration and treatment. And then it's also, of course, been designed to overflow as needed into probably a conventional storm drain system. Downtown Auburn, if you guys have been there lately, they've done some redevelopment, and they put in Low-Impact Development features. Again, the simple stormwater flows into the curb cut into a treatment feature. Permeable pavement, water flows straight into the sidewalks and infiltrates onsite. This is Rock Creek Plaza, they've got on-treatment bioswales. Another common practice is permeable pavement, and that's what these features are showing. This has been going on up in the Lake Tahoe area, there's quite a few of these features. Again, the pavement, concrete, permeable concrete, and bioswales for treatment. This is an example of a redevelopment site, where before you had lots of stormwater discollecting and oil and other pollutants collecting, and they came in redevelopment, put the curb cuts in, and now have all that water being treated in a facility.
Mind if I ask a question?
Sure.
How do you make concrete permeable?
Call it asphalt.
Well, how does that, how does water even get through that?
Well, it's made in such a way that it's like a sponge.
Pixie dust.
And it's, even though it's rigid, the water can permeate right through it.
But can you do that with concrete?
Yes.
To a lesser degree, I think, yeah.
That's wild, I didn't know that. Thank you.
Did Larry just answer the question?
If you'd charity me extra for today's presentation.
Great, thank you. Some other common things that you might see more homes and communities doing, rather, commercial sites, disconnecting downspouts and running them into a vegetated area, or collecting into cisterns and rain barrels. These features, again, they become part of the community, and so, West Sacramento, you know, in their civic centers, they have features, tree interceptors. So, they're designed right into the built environment. So, now I'm gonna jump into a little bit of the background of how we developed this manual. We started the process in 2014, and we decided that the entire jurisdictions of West Placer, we're gonna work together to develop one compliance manual. So, anybody doing stormwater compliance within West Placer has one set of rules that they're complying with. It is one permit that rules us, so it made sense for all of us to partner up and to work on this effort together. That held, except for Rockland, they chose to do their own manual. So, for this manual, we've got Placer County, Lincoln, Roseville, Loomis, and Auburn, all of which have been in support of this manual and have been participating in the development of the manual. We also hired a technical consulting team that developed the manual, that was CEBEC Engineering, and, you know, CDM Smith did a heavy lifting job on this. We also worked with Diane Batia on some recommended code changes, which we're gonna talk to you about here in a little bit. And then, again, we also did some outreach to the technical community. We formed a technical advisory committee made up of members of the community, architects, biologists, floodplain engineers, engineers, NGOs, to make sure that as we moved through this process, it was consistent with what respected professionals would expect this to be. We also held two public outreach meetings. The first one was in beginning of the process in 2014, and the second one was held at the end of the process here in 2016 in February. Those were just to provide a public opportunity for comment. The manual, as well as the template, have been posted online and public comment. We've responded to public comment, and that was all posted online. And then we've also gone as an informational item to all the MACs that have a jurisdiction in that planning area. And this is where I get to hand off the presentation. And I'll be back to summarize and talk about the code amendments.
Thank you. Again, Rebecca Tabor with Engineering and Surveying. And I'm here to talk to you about the manual. You do have it attached to your staff report. This is how it looks printed, and there are appendices in the print and color. The manual, as Jen said, it's all about minimizing the negative impacts of stormwater runoff due to development. It provides a step-by-step approach for designers to incorporate LID into their project design. Our hope is that it will help streamline the permit process for both the applicants, their design teams, and Placer County and other local agency plan reviewers, because we're all gonna be looking at the same plan, the same report that prints out as a result of them following the manual. Except for Rockland. So, the West Placer manual contents include the following. The talks about what's a regulated project, how to perform a site assessment for your project site, BMP selection, fact sheets, very detailed. Operation and maintenance, which is a requirement of the permit, and what needs to be done for each BMP you choose. And then the meat of it really is the post-construction stormwater quality plan. That is the automated template that is provided to assist the designer and the plan reviewer in navigating through the state permit requirements and to produce the consistent and complete submittal package. That template is an Excel-based compliance tool. It's on our website, as Jen said. It guides you through BMP selection, calculates the runoff reduction for each BMP that's chosen. It's in a very standard format. We feel it's fairly user-friendly. We tried. And there are examples, which helps the user who picks up this manual to kind of work through the project they're working on. So, what projects are regulated and what is required of them? So, there are small projects which are defined in the permit as replacing or creating 2,500 to 5,000 square feet of impervious surface. That's a small project. That could be a house with a driveway. So, those are actually regulated as a small project. What those projects have to do is consider an LID layout and choose a minimum of one site design measure. We have a list of the site design measures on a future slide.
Rebecca, do you mind? On the small projects, you know, given that we have rural Placer County, the majority, I would say, of an individual property owner wanting to develop just their own home is gonna probably trigger this when you consider the driveway, unless they're gonna do a rock driveway of some sort. The driveway and the house are certainly gonna hit that 2,500 coverage, especially if it's a single-story home. And so, I guess, I'm thinking this hits a lot of people out there.
It potentially could hit a lot of permits or building permits, as well as more discretionary permits that you see. So, we are working on the implementation step with the Building Services Division to have a checkpoint at the front counter to look at how much impervious surface is being created, and then that would trigger...
What the mitigation's gonna be.
Well, a couple of the forms in that automated template would need to be completed for small projects. So, it's Forms 1 and 2 generally, but they do have to choose a site design measure, and they have to show how much runoff will be reduced as a result of that BMP or site design measure that they're choosing. And it, it sounds scary.
It does.
But we, we have tried to make it as easy as possible by creating this Excel spreadsheet. There's, plug in some fields, you know, and you do need to know how much impervious surface you're creating, and you need to choose a site design measure. It could be plant a tree, and that actually has a runoff reduction to it. So, you just have to show, per the state permit, that you've reduced runoff by choosing one of these site design measures. I'll, I'll show you the list of site design measures after this slide. We can talk about it some more.
When does this kick in? I mean, I know some of it's already now, but when does the new parts of this kick in?
It is actually in effect, it became effective July 1st of 2015.
Okay, so there's nothing new in this?
Well, it's been required by the state.
Right.
We've been working on our manual, and the state's been aware that we were catching up a little bit to get this done. And they know that we're doing our best to start implementing it. So, we're, we're there. I mean, we're, we've had it available on our webpage for folks to start using. We haven't been capturing the small projects, really, but we're working on that implementation now.
Okay. And I'm gonna ask you a lot of questions about that, 'cause I'm getting ready to build a house. And I'm going way over 2,500. Not over 5,000, but I'm going over 2,500.
Are you within that comment area?
I am.
Yes, that's a key. You need to make sure you're in the boundaries of the permit area.
Did you bring your checkbooks?
Oh, man. Am I crazy or what?
And I will say that for small projects, you don't need to have an engineer prepare the template, the Forms 1 and 2. That, that doesn't need to be done by a PE. But a regulated project has to have a stamp by a professional engineer.
Thank God for that.
To keep it under 5,000.
Well, because of the cumulative impacts of all these new regulations are just making it completely unaffordable for us to build a house. I mean, I, you know, I'm already looking at a ton of fees and having to bring in consultants to address those issues. And I was talking to my wife last night after reading this, I'm saying, are we out of our blooming minds?
Right.
I mean, because, and I know it's not Placer County's fault. I mean, you're responding to the federal and state requirements that are coming down on us, and I understand that, but this is just, we're just crazy.
The layers.
What are you complaining for, then?
I'm sorry, it's personal now. Sorry.
Question for you, I mean, not to get too far off track here, but Commissioner Nader builds his home, and he has to plant some trees to capture the runoff and get his quota down to an acceptable level. Who goes around and checks and makes sure those trees stay there?
It's a self-certification. It's really, there's really no follow-up on the county's behalf. Not on the small projects. So, yeah.
If it's a larger one, and it's a permanent BMP, we do put it in a program that we go and look at, depending on if it's a high-criteria or low, either once a year or every five years.
Go ahead, I got more questions later, but...
Okay, so maybe I'll just keep stepping through, and we can definitely answer all your questions, or give it a good try to answer all your questions. So, that's a small project. A regulated project is over 5,000 square feet of impervious. These projects have more requirements to optimize the LID layout, source controls, site design measures, and then also some treatment and baseline hydro modification. In addition, if a regulated project is adding more than an acre of impervious surface, it also becomes a hydro modification management project. That means that they need to demonstrate that they're controlling the two-year, 24-hour flows to pre-development flow rates. The very first thing that a project should do is a site assessment. The state permit specifically requires that at the earliest planning stages, a site assessment be performed. We have a whole chapter in the manual of what this means, what you have to consider, the existing conditions, constraints, soils, geology, the way the water runs off the site. So, that all should be figured out before you figure out where a building or pavement should go on your, on your property. Site design measures, these are a list straight out of the permit, and they're included in our manual as BMPs, and there's fact sheets on each of them. The fact sheets include the advantages and limitations of each of these, key design features, and the maintenance requirements. So, as you can see, tree planting is a site design measure. Rooftop and impervious area disconnection, most homes these days are doing that. So, if you've chosen one of these, you've met the intent of the permit. But you do have to show how much runoff is estimated to be reduced, and the automated template does that for you.
Next year, you have to do them all. Progressive.
So, this is the last slide I have, before I turn it back to Jen. Really just wanted to provide an example of a commercial project that has gone through site planning and BMP selection. So, this one has a driveway and then parking area, you know, building's placed up here. In theory, they've done a total site design approach. They've looked at their, their site assessment, their soils, the way the water flows off the property. And then they've figured out where it's best to place the building, maybe where the soils are the poorest, you know, not good as opposed to porous. And, and they're disconnecting the runoff from the roof of the, of the building, and they've got a grass swale, and that's infiltrating some of the runoff. They've got bio-retention in the center of the parking lot in this case. Infiltration, and then it goes to another bio-retention area. So, everything, they're just trying to infiltrate before it leaves the site, as opposed to that conventional method of kind of paving everything out and putting buildings everywhere, and then trying to put in pipes and maybe a basin somewhere where they can collect and settle that runoff before it leaves the site. So, with that, turn it back to Jen, and then we can answer questions.
So, I think, I see questions on the face, but...
I broke it.
Really, kind of, we have one more slide to talk about, and then I'll kind of give a brief summary, and then we'll kind of dive into questions. But part of what we're asking you to do is, and what we're needing to do, is to implement the manual, and the stormwater permitting is to make some simple adjustments to our code. And that has to do with Chapter 8, to implement design standards, as well as we're adding a definition for what actually is Low-Impact Development. And then we have a strategy in various parts of the code that says we're applicable or comply with and be consistent with, and we point right to the manual and say, you have to be consistent with the manual. And that same type of language can be found in the grading and erosion sections, as well as in the design standards sections in Chapter 16, where it says you have to bring in a tentative map, and here's all the items you need to show on your tentative map. We're also saying, and, show where you're going to put your stormwater features and treatments. There is one setback adjustment that we're making, and that would allow for an exemption for the storage and harvesting structures. Say that right. An exemption in the structural setback for harvesting structure. So, if you're putting a rain barrel or cistern in, and it needs to go within that setback, and as you know, a lot of, most properties have a 30-foot setback in the county, that your rain barrel or cistern could be within that setback. This might become more problematic in smaller, the smaller lot, in particular, in an urban area where you maybe get a five-foot setback. You might have some issues with life safety on putting in a large cistern. But the good news is there's quite a bit of technology going on there for rain harvesting, so we don't think this is gonna be a problem. I'm, I think somebody told me the other day, you could have designed fences that are actually holding, storing water, which I thought was pretty interesting. And then also, when you're dealing with paved surfaces, talk about, and defining permeable pavement, and then having some flexibility about where the county would allow permeable paving to be applied. So, those are the code amendments. They're in attachment C of your staff report if you really wanted to see the specific language. But I did kind of want to add a summary, and I heard the kind of questions about the small projects. And the first kind of thing that I like to tell people as a planner versus an engineer is, we took an extra year to make sure that this template really didn't make it as easy and as painless as possible for those small projects to have to comply with these standards. And so, it was quite a technical process, but really, I've stepped through that myself, not building a house, but just so I understood what we were asking people to do. And it has to do with setting in your elevation, defining your impermeable surface. And then, as Rebecca stepped you through that checklist, if you have so many trees, how many trees are you gonna be planting? Maybe how many already exist? And you populate that information, and it will automatically generate what the reduction is for your elevation. And then you print that out, you bring it in with your building permit, you print out a first page acknowledging that you have to comply with this, right? Which means you have to plant the trees, or you have to maintain the setback if you said you were gonna be so far back from a stream. And, and that's the end of it. You submit that with your building permit, the technician checks it off, and all of that reporting goes up to Mary's group, and Mary reports that out to the state. Now, if you're above that small project, if you're a regulated project, it does become a little more, it's more complicated. But it's no more complicated than what regulated projects have to do right now, because you're already designing your stormwater with an engineer. It's just, how are you designing that? Are you grading down and putting in pipes and making, you know, storage facilities the conventional way? Or are you going to look at putting in these features that will do the onsite infiltration? And all of those features right now are currently designed by an engineer, a licensed engineer. So, really, what this program and our template is providing is for those engineers to have a standardized, when they produce their reports, of, here's my calculation, here's the report, and for our engineers, when they get the report, they know how to standardize and look at that and say, okay, they have met the compliance of what we're asking you to do for stormwater regulation.
Now, are you seeing that for a small project? You still need an engineer's input on that?
No. The small project, it's the owner that gets to sign that, the first form. There's two forms you have to submit in. One is just the basic, where's your project, what's your address? And then acknowledging that, your understanding that whatever you say you're gonna do for your BMP, you're required to do it.
Well, I just did a quick calculation in my head, and based on the requirements of the development I'm going into, I'm gonna be over 5,000.
So, if you're over 5,000, you will have to have a licensed engineer.
You're gonna have to go through all those formulas in Chapter 6.
It's gonna cost you way over 5,000, let me guess.
Actually, the next question is, after you've done this, done all the requirements, put it in, is there gonna be a requirement that it has to be inspected and redone, escrow change, change of ownership?
Actually, there's a section in the manual that talks about this, the maintenance agreements being recorded with the property deed. So, you're not gonna be able to get away with it or claim that you didn't know it was there. That's the way I read that, right? So, and, and when you submit your maintenance plan, you're also submitting your certification that you're agreeing to do the regular maintenance. So, let's say if it's a commercial site, and there's six or seven, you know, tenants, and there's one or two features, usually the landowner is the one maintaining the parking and the area, so they would be the ones... the ones maintaining these features. So, the landowner will know through the deed restriction or the deed noticing that these have to be maintained and they have to be put into place. If there's a violation, if they weren't designed right and aren't functioning right, then it'll fall onto Mary's group to work with the property owner to bring that feature into compliance.
So, they'll get called out, I'm sorry, they'll get called out at an escrow to verify that it's either acceptable or not acceptable? Is that going to be...
No, I don't think that. I think it's just the deed is to put you on notice of what these features are and that they have to be maintained over time. I don't think there's anything in escrow that has to verify that they're still there.
By function, it will happen more so than by code, I think.
Right. I mean, if somebody's selling a property that has that deed restriction, you want to make sure they're functioning, right?
Well, we're dealing with that at TRPA right now, and the realtors are just having a fit. They don't want to have to bring an escrow into some government agency and have it verified. And the reason is, a lot of them don't get maintained, and they get silted in, and there's a lot of work to restore them again. And so, I don't know, I guess it's just a point of interest, but I...
Well, I guess that was my question, is if you have a large project, say, a big residential subdivision, can they submit some of the little project remedies on each home?
So, yeah, I mean, that's part of the detail and why you need a project engineer, and, you know, Rebecca can jump up and answer this, but it does take a lot of design layout, and we talked a lot and did not include, as an example, a large subdivision, because literally, it was really difficult to, okay, most subdivisions, as you know, you come in with your improvement plans, and you can calculate from your improvement plans where stuff is going, where it's flowing, how much impervious surface. But you might not know which way, which direction a roof drains or flowing. So, it's going to take some creativity on the part of the engineers to make assumptions on larger subdivisions where you have your track homes about the roof runoff. I'm saying assumptions, but they will have to project what, if they don't know what model will be laid there, how that will flow off the site.
So, though, the county allows for, or this plan allows for, the mitigation to come on the individual residences to make a cumulative total as opposed to a big hydro modification, retention, and reintroduction spot elsewhere?
Right. And part of it, too, is you just don't know, the soils and the geology of the county are really hard to capture in one cohesive system, right? Because some areas have a lot more rain, others have more runoff. And so, to serve all masters, the template helps walk you through and make some assumptions about those things. But at the end of the day, it's still up to the engineers and the stormwater program to make sure the compliance works.
I guess, Jennifer, what I'm getting at is more the box we're opening. You have a 500-home subdivision, a 200-home subdivision, and we have 500 individual, basically, implementation plans for each house that make the cumulative total work.
Oh, I see what he's asking. Yeah, yeah, I see what you're asking.
Yeah, sorry. Oh, that's okay. It's a great question. So, the idea is that a project like that would come in as a pre-development first, pre-development meeting.
And it's showing cisterns and rain capture?
Well, not that level of detail for starters.
Okay, but I mean, when it's built, those remedies could be allowed for that project as a whole?
So, you know, we're yet to kind of, it's kind of uncharted, because we haven't had it come through yet. We haven't had a big subdivision use the template. But the idea is that they'd start at a pre-development meeting level with staff. We'd tell them that they would need to walk through this stormwater quality management plan. They would need to look at a big picture of their roads and the impervious from the roads, their lot layout, and probably estimate the impervious surface for the lots, for the home sites, driveways, you know? They would need to potentially, and it depends, because sometimes you have custom homes, so they're not building the homes, and other times you've got, like, a product.
Maybe to save you a little time, I guess where I'm getting at at this more so than the implementation of it is the upkeep of it. And kind of where Larry is going is, at what point in time am I going to have somebody from the county in my backyard looking around to make sure my rain barrels didn't disappear and that I didn't, you know, modify the landscaping and take away the retention areas and stuff? Well, again, I'm talking about, one, two things, a manageable program on the costs and expense and size of government, and, two, the intrusion of privacy and the usability of somebody's property.
It's going to be a turning in, too.
Well, again, it's a big can of worms I can see being opened that is going to become unmanageable.
I guess I would say, at this point, that it's, we're reasonably confident that upfront with new projects, that we're going to be requiring the permit requirements. You know, we're going to be requiring that they design it for low-impact development to the maximum extent practicable. Just one other thought on the big residential subdivision. So, they'll probably have a development notebook where each lot, as somebody comes in to pull a building permit, there'll be notes saying, "You need to disconnect your roof drain."
Have to prove compliance at the time they want a building permit or sell, or, like I said, I just see this as a never-ending...
And as far as ongoing monitoring or that, that would be more the stormwater program, the public works stormwater program to speak to perhaps, if Mary might want to jump in on that.
At this point, I didn't see us keeping track of those smoldered trees, stay there, the cisterns stay there.
But you're getting to that point, can't you?
Oh, hopefully not, because, you know, our staff is very limited and not really funded. But we do currently keep track, like, the big subdivisions, it has a homeowners association, and they have those systems in place, and that's the one we keep track of. And we go out and monitor based on a risk to the water quality. And we already do that, we keep track, we have a database of that, and we know where those things are. So, we go out and we look and see, is it still functioning, is it not functioning? And then we get with the homeowners association, or if it's a commercial building, we talk to them and say, you know, "You homeowner," because all the permits with the state goes back to the landowner. Whoever owns that land, regardless of who's operating on it, is responsible for those features.
So, the commercial property owner who put in pervious pavement in his parking lot, who has a good parking lot, there's no potholes, no cracks, no dips, no nothing, still could get a visit from somebody from the county or state and say, "You know, your concrete's plugged, it's not working as good, and you have to replace your parking lot?"
We could, we could look at that. We do that up in the Tahoe Basin, like you said. We have a commercial industrial program where we look at, you know, is their BMP still functioning, they're great, is the sediment in there, do they need to clean it out, do they need to maintain it?
And that's why you're going to get to the escrow thing eventually, you watch, because that's the only tool there is available to cause people to come back in periodically and get upgraded, or make sure that they're being maintained. And that's going to be the tool, you watch. We've considered it probably five times since 1980, and every time, the realtors just come out of the woodwork and just storm the meeting, and we haven't done it yet, but it's going to happen, I know it has.
And I think you guys got enough to do already, so I'm not hardly wanting to pile on.
Unfortunately, the state keeps changing, and these regulations are only going to get more stringent, more restrictive as time goes on.
I guess that's my question, my next question, and maybe it needs to go to legal counsel, what if you just say no?
The feds won't let you do that.
What are they going to do? I mean, are they going to come arrest the board? Where is the repercussions if you just say, "You know, we're not participating"?
The state and the feds are going to...
Are going to do what? That's what I want to know.
They could potentially find the county, they could find the county.
Transportation funding, everything. Yeah, they'll take away all the funding that we get from.
I just want to interject, because Sarah brought up a good point. And one of the things that we've made it very clear to the community as we've gone through this process with the development community in particular, this manual and the actions you're taking here today is simply a tool to help them comply. The compliance with the permit for everybody that's regulated, whether it's the county or the cities, is up to each jurisdiction. So, whether we comply or not, that was determined back in 2013, when that permit was negotiated. And so, this, the stepping through and completing the design manual is simply a tool. There's nothing in this manual that says you have to comply with the storm, you know, the compliance already exists today. So, what we're trying to and attempting with this manual is to help people make it easy to comply. And I get it, you know, the discussion of how much is too far, and we have tried to steer the conversation about this manual away from that, because you're arguing over whether we should comply with the permit or not, and we were given direction to move forward with the helping implement the permit. And so, that's kind of where this manual went. The manual doesn't say, "You have to do this because we just think it's good and we have to adopt it." We're saying, "This is a tool to comply with the state permit." So, I just want to make sure that's really clear, because we know, and we've heard many of times, why should we be doing this? And we've tried to steer away from that discussion, simply because we're already regulated and permitted to do it.
So, what you're saying is, why we have to comply to it is, we have no choice?
Right, absolutely.
So, what's the point of the discussion?
Right. So, I mean, I get it.
Not to be rude, I'm just sorry.
And again, whether you approve this manual or not today, or make a recommendation that we shouldn't move forward on the manual, still does not get us out of the permit regulation. All it will do is make it more difficult for those regulated projects when they come in. They get to submit whatever they want, and staff gets to look at it and say, "How do I know they complied with Section E11 of the permit?"
But Wayne's house, new house, it's still, he still has to comply whether this manual's...
Right.
This manual should give him a little roadmap to...
This manual will say, "Fill out these two sheets, and you're done with your compliance. Unless you're over 5,000, then you will have to do some additional work."
I'm sure you've got a lot of pushback at the MAC meetings about this, too, and intrusion on, more intrusion into our property rights. Well, I have another sort of selfish question to ask, it's kind of technical. But if you use a more permeable sort of, let's say, for your driveway, use pavers, and you have an 11% to 15% grade, is that still considered an acceptable permeable? Because you're going to get some element of runoff going down that, is that still acceptable?
This is way too technical for a plan.
I'm sorry. Rebecca.
I mean, off the cuff, I would...
With that kind of a grade, is it still considered acceptable, permeable?
I think we'll have to look into that on the grading, grade question.
Right.
I mean, again, if you're complying with and putting in, if you're the small project and you're saying, "I'm going to put permeable pavers in my driveway."
Right.
You say, "How big is your driveway?", you check that, put in the calculation, and you're done.
Well, my driveway's going to be at least 240 feet.
Right. It's the question as, does your impermeable surface get over to the 5,000 square foot?
The development will not let me do gravel.
It does say, "Pavements are not suitable..."
After what grade level?
But that's already in the manual that...
Right.
Not suitable for sloped areas, low points to be carefully evaluated, and under grains must be placed appropriately.
Well, it doesn't say what percentage is considered inappropriate, so it's only on a flat surface?
Are you reading from this manual that we got in front of us? Is that from already the...
You might not have all the fact sheets that were in the appendices that get attached to the staff report.
I don't know that we did.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, somebody, I can, I just thought, yeah.
Can somebody, maybe somebody mentioned already, how come Rockland's not in there?
Well, they're a part of the permit, but they chose to do a different compliance manual.
Oh, I see.
So, they still have to show compliance, it's just, we chose to, as a collective West Placer group, if you walk into the city of Roseville, you're going to see the same manual at the city and be handed the same thing and say, "Please comply with and bring in your forms." Rockland has their own manual.
So, they can't get, they're not getting out of the compliance.
They're not getting out of the compliance, no. And a lot of the questions of the subdivisions, I've heard Roseville answer that question, and they are less concerned about the future homeowners, you know, taking out rock rain gardens or removing cisterns, as long, you know, because then it would be a cumulative, like, you know, more than 50% or so would have to actually do that over time to really make an impact on, you know, what the reduction is. So, they seem less, and they've been doing more stormwater compliance than traditionally maybe Placer County has. So, they have experience with this, and I've heard them answer that the thought is, and in manuals, their position on this has been, you know, as long as it's designed upfront as this, changes over time should be, should not compromise the entire subdivision design. If somebody chooses, say, "I don't like that rain garden, I'm taking it out and putting in a desert plant, and I'm piping my water," you know, they're not regulating that right now. And yes, I could see in 50 years, maybe we start doing that, but...
But like swimming pools and all the associated concrete surfaces that go with them, and...
It's all impervious, yes. So, any more questions?
It's not a pool.
So, okay, and I unfortunately did not include a nice little handy recommendation. But again, summarizing why we're here today and what we're asking of you is a formal recommendation on Page Five of your staff report, written at the top. There's three items we're asking you to take action on, as well as some findings. So, I apologize, I didn't get it into my presentation. But, you know, we're asking you to approve a recommendation on the planning, or the county code amendments, look at making a recommendation on the resolution adopting the manual, and then you have to make a sequo finding. And the sequo finding that we're making, asking you to make, is an exemption, and that exemption has to do with, when regulatory agencies establish procedures that achieve additional environmental protection, they are exempt under 15308, Class 8. So, that is the exemption we're asking you to make a finding on.
Thank you. Any other additional questions of staff? If not, anyone else in the audience would like to comment on this item today? I don't see none.
Yeah.
Legal counsel has, oh, I thought you were reaching for your talk button there, you're just picking up some papers. What's the pleasure of the commission, then?
Well, it pains me to say...
Don't you make the motion, then, if it pains you?
It pains me to say that I will try to make a motion on this. And I understand, what I said earlier is that the county has, has to comply with this, particularly the state and the federal requirements, so. And you folks have done a great job trying to lay it out and at least give a roadmap to the least painful way to get through this, so compliments to the staff for making that effort. So, I would be, again, somewhat reluctant, but ready to make a recommendation that the Planning Commission forward to the Board of Supervisors. One, find the proposed West Placer Stormwater Quality Design Manual and proposed amendments to the Placer County Code to be categorically exempt under Sequo Guidelines, Section 15308. And two, adopt all, adopt by resolution the West Placer County, Placer Stormwater Design Manual. And three, adopt an ordinance to amend the county code to implement the West Placer Stormwater Quality Design Manual as set forth in our attachment, subject to the following findings. Do I need to say any more than that, Karen? Okay. Thank you.
Second, has been a motion, a second roll call, please, Kathy.
Mr. Akkuri's absent, Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent, Mr. Moss?
Not has an objection to the quality of work that has been performed here, but just as a general statement for my displeasure with the whole process and what it's going to lead to in the future, no.
Mr. Johnson's absent, Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes. The motion carried. Thank you for the staff presentation. Again, I think you have to comply anyway, already, as of three years ago, so this just helps you comply.
Yeah, well...
I think.
Gives me a roadmap, I guess.
Okay. I want to thank staff for that presentation.
Rebecca, I need to talk to you later, I guess.
I was going to say, if I can, if you're taking your driveway out, take that out of your public. If you're going to make it a forced payment for the driveway, then you don't have to add that in your public.
Well, what about the...
Impervious.
Well, what about...
We can't get it under 5,000.
Well, I guess... Well, I, I guess.
Um, so, Rebecca?
Good afternoon. Uh, so again, my name is Rebecca Tabor, and I'm a senior civil engineer with the engineering and surveying division, and with me is Sarah Gilmore. She's an associate civil engineer, and Dan Doughty, the engineering manager for our division. This item is a 2016 update to the Placer County general specifications and design plates. These will replace in their entirety the 2000, the existing 2005 general specifications and design plates. They're used by the county and the development community. The general specs, we call them general specs, and design split, design plates are included as attachment A and B to your staff report. Preparing this update has been a collaborative effort between ESD and the divisions of engineering and environmental engineering, the sewer folks, uh, those divisions within the Department of Public Works and Facilities. These documents together provide construction information to contractors building public improvements within Placer County. About every 10 years, we update and revise these standards to conform to current practices, correct problems, provide enhanced direction, and improve overall clarity. The general specifications are the county supplement to the highway construction standards used by Caltrans. They include design standards for sewer systems. They're also used by public works and facilities for capital improvement projects that they bid out. The design plates are specific engineering design details. They include dimensions and notes in a visual format. They're often referenced in conditions of approval or on improvement plans to provide clarity and direction. They're utilized throughout project conditioning, plan check, and inspection. We first took the plates to the last Pages meeting in June 23rd, last year, 2015. Pages is the professional architects, geologists, engineers, and surveyors group. It was their very last meeting. We then worked on a general specs update after that, and when that was ready, we sent it, we sent an email to over a thousand professional engineers, utility providers, and contractors, and that we included the Building Industry Association and two local contractors associations. We posted both documents to our webpage, and we allowed for a three-week review. Uh, after that time, this was in March last, this last month, uh, we, we really didn't get any significant comments. We had a few internal comments from, um, county staff, and, and we actually addressed and, and made some changes based on that. Some background, the general specs were last updated in 2005. Since then, Caltrans standard specifications were revised and reordered to use plain language in state government regulations as a requirement, uh, from the federal government. Technical requirements did not significantly change. We updated the format, the section numbering, the order, section headers, and matched terminology to the Caltrans standards throughout. We even adopted more of the Caltrans standards, and that led to our 2016 document having fewer pages than before. We went from 122 pages to 61 pages, so that's good. The plates, we have a summary table of the changes that we've made to these design plates. That's attachment C of your staff report. All 86 plates were drafted in-house by ESD engineers. Sarah Gilmore was one of them, and Andy Deiken in our Tahoe office, they did a great job. We updated the scale and the layout, the formatting. Uh, we also different, or we, we changed the numbering since the last update, so you could differentiate between the 2005 and, and this go-round. We kept the plates grouped as before under roads, construction, grading, utilities, and survey. We changed the department responsible because previously they were all the Department of Public Works. Since then, you know, we've split and we're CDRs, so now these plates are either ESD or DPWF. We removed some of the old plates that were no longer used or applicable, and we added some new plates. The, this one is trails, gated entry, these are new. Also, one about accessible ramps, snow stakes, grease interceptor, and a sand oil separator. So those are new. All of these documents are available on our webpage for the public to download, and they will be updated there on a continuous basis. I have one small correction to make to your staff report before making the recommendation. So on page two, the Sequo guidelines section, I got a typo there. It should read, as it reads on the slide, it should say, Sequo guideline section 15061B3. So with that, we are asking that the planning commission recommend approval to the board of supervisors to, one, find the proposed revisions to the Placer County general specifications and engineering design plates be categorically exempt under Sequo guideline section 15061B3. And two, approve the revisions to the general specifications and engineering design plates as well as provide authority for the director of public works and facilities and/or the director of the Community Development Resource Agency to approve and implement future administrative revisions to the general specifications and engineering plates. And that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff?
I'm ready to submit.
Anyone else in the audience care to make a comment this time? Seeing none, close the public portion, which is the pleasure of the commission?
I recommend approval to the board of supervisors. Number one, find proposed revision to be categorically exempt from Sequo guidelines, section 15061, parenthesis B, parenthesis 3. And secondly, approve the revisions to the general specifications and engineering design plates as well as provide authority to the directors of DPWF and CDRA to approve and implement future administrative revisions.
I'll second that.
In the movement and second is there, uh, I'll second it already, uh, roll call, please?
Uh, Mr. Curry's absent, Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Gray is absent, Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson's absent, Mr. Nader?
Yes.
Mr. Ricucci?
Yes. Okay, that looks like it, let's see, consent calendar, we already said there wasn't anything on there, so I think this kinda completes our, our meeting today, so we'll, we'll adjourn.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.